Okay, got the systems on.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Welcome to council members, staff, members of the public. This is the regular meeting of the Moraga Town Council. It's Wednesday, May 25th at 6:30 PM. Pursuant to guidance from the county health office and due to high COVID case rates in Moraga and in the county, we are holding this meeting virtually. Is being conducted pursuant to government code section 54953, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. Consistent with that code, this meeting will be held via teleconference only and will not be physically open to the public. Town council members and staff will be teleconferenced into the meeting by audio or video, and the meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar. Members of the public may participate by providing comment via Zoom and joining the Zoom webinar pursuant to the instructions that are at the front of the agenda. And if you would like to make a comment during the meeting, please use the raised hand feature of Zoom and you will be called upon. All right, that is it for that. So I'm going to call this meeting to order and let's do a roll call. Council members, Macker.
Here.
Anoda.
Here.
McClure.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wolleke.
Here.
And Mayor Sauce is here. And next is the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Vice Mayor, soon to be Mayor Wolleke.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next is special announcements. I have a report out. The council at 5:30 conducted a special closed session meeting regarding conference with real property negotiators. There is no reportable action as a result of that meeting. Proclamations and presentations, there are none. Public comments. This is the time that is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the council and items that are not on the agenda. Council cannot discuss details or vote on non-agenda items, but your comments may be referred to staff or put on a future agenda. Public input will also be taken during each agenda item, including during the consent items. Public comment is limited to three minutes, so please raise your hand on Zoom if you'd like to speak again on items that are not on the agenda tonight. Let's see, firsthand I see is Clay. Clay, could you like to join us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Sauce. May I start first of all?
Please do.
Good evening, Mayor Sauce, Vice Mayor Wolleke, and town council members. I am Clay Serran, president of the Moraga Park Foundation. And I have two items this evening regarding the foundation for your and the public's information. First, the Moraga Park Foundation was founded in 1977 and is beginning its 46th year of existence. Pretty much from the beginning, the Park Foundation has presented musical entertainment to the citizens of Moraga and the surrounding communities in one form or another. Now, after a two-year hiatus due to COVID-19, I am pleased to inform you that the town of Moraga and the Moraga Park Foundation is once again presenting the Moraga Summer Concert Series for 2022 at the Commons Park Band Show. We have a great lineup of bands for you, nine concerts total, each band performing on Thursday evenings from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Except for the Fourth of July concert, which, as you may know, occurs on, you guessed it, Monday, July 4th, from 7:00 PM until one half hour after the town's fireworks show. The concert series will run from June 9th through August 4th. We will also have four food vendors on site for your dining pleasure. Please make your choice among burgers, Mexican cuisine, or even oven baked pizza on site, or you may bring your own picnic dinner. Polish any or all of these off with delicious ice cream from Lord's, a local favorite. Either way, good food and good music should make for a great evening to be had by all, and we hope to see everyone at one or more of our concerts this season. Second, if you would like a concert schedule, it is available on the town of Moraga website and also on our new improved Moraga Park Foundation website at www.moragaparks.org. On the Park Foundation website, one may also find information on MPF events such as the concerts and the pear harvests that we put on in August. MPF-sponsored or funded park projects, such as the Moraga for Monarchs Garden at Ranch Laguna Park, and ways to donate to and/or volunteer with the Moraga Park Foundation. Donations of any amount and at any time, and volunteers are always welcome at MPF. We are also in need of additional board members. The only requirements for being on our board is an interest in supporting and working with Moraga's parks and recreational facilities and being a current or previous resident of Moraga. An interest in serving in a leadership capacity is also a big plus. At this time, I ask for no action on the council's part tonight other than seeing each of you at one or more of the concerts this summer or one of the Park Foundation's upcoming events. Please feel free to stop by and say hello. I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Clay, thank you very much. And on behalf of the entire council, thanks to you and the Park Foundation for all that you're doing for the betterment of this community. And I know that we are all very excited, as is the whole community, about resuming the summer concerts in the park. That's a cherished tradition that has been very sorely missed, so I'm very much looking forward to June 9th and getting that going. So thanks for coming to update us on all you're doing. Any other public comments on items that are not on the agenda? I see no other hands. Marty, am I right?
Correct.
Okay, great. All right, so a closed public comment. Next is adoption of the consent agenda. Are there any items that council members would like to pull? All right, seeing none, could I have a motion?
Move for adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion Vice Mayor, second council member, Anoda. Any discussion, any public comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll take a roll call. Vote, Councilmember Macker.
Yes.
Councilmember Anoda.
Yes.
Councilmember McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolleke.
Yes.
Mayor Sauce is a yes. It passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item is adoption of the meeting agenda. Mike.
So moved.
Oh, excellent. We have a motion, the second.
Second.
Second, okay. Motion McClure, second, Anoda. Any discussion, any public comments? Seeing none, a closed public comment. Take a roll call vote, Councilmember Macker.
Yes.
Councilmember Anoda.
Yes.
Councilmember McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolleke.
Yes.
And Mayor Sauce is a yes. That item passes unanimously. All right, the next item is reports. Cynthia, you're up.
Great. Good evening. I am very pleased to share with you that our new Moraga Police Lieutenant, Steve Borbely, has started. And Steve comes to us from Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office, and he retired thereafter, at least 28 years of service as a captain. So he's very experienced. He's worked parole. He's worked the dispatch and he managed the dispatch center. And he comes to us with a great deal of enthusiasm and skills, so we're pleased to welcome him to the town of Moraga. I also wanted to share with you that Bridgeway Contractors, the contractor for the Canyon Road Bridge, will be resuming the items on their punch list on June 1st. And some of these items will require day-long road closures. So our Public Works Department has been working with the Moraga School District, Ocalana's Union's High School District, and our emergency service providers to determine the days that will be least impactful on the community, and we will be giving people notice when those days are known. But that will be happening intermittently through the summer, and then we will be done with the bridge, which is very exciting. Another thing that's incredibly exciting is our Fourth of July festivities are on. So I know that this is a favorite of so many people in town, and after a two-year hiatus, the Fourth of July Parade and all the community events are resuming. Interestingly, our fireworks provider had a minimum this year, a $25,000 minimum. So I think our show will be bigger, which will be, which will be great. But our Buy a Rocket campaign has started, and each year we rely upon the community to make the generous donations that they make to make this event happen, and our goal is $30,000. So we'll be sending out letters, but all that information is available on the Parks Rec page on our website, and thank you in advance to everybody for contributing. Like I said, I know this is a town favorite, and it's really great that we'll be celebrating again. Also, good news, the summer camps are starting. So on the 30th of this month, so next week, the Moraga Summer Camps are starting, and then the following week, Moraga Day Camps are starting. And we have had just outpouring of interest from both the volunteer counselors in training, as well as we have quite a few bit of staff and a record number of kids and programs that are all booked with people on the waiting list. So it's an exciting time, and we're happy to be able to celebrate and have those events back for the children in the community. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Cynthia. All right, Councilmember Macker.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I was under the weather and unable to attend the appreciation luncheon hosted by Moraga Citizens Network. So I wanted to use my report this week just to sincerely thank staff and all of the volunteers that also attended the luncheon. I heard wonderful things, and I really, really appreciate everything everybody has done, especially this year during such a tough year and also during an extremely busy year with the housing initiative. So thank you, staff, and I saw the awesome photos. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to be there. End of report.
Thank you. Councilmember Anoda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I hope I'm not going to be repeating myself because the last meeting, I think I said some of these things, but it wasn't really a meeting. It was like a halfway meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and say all of it. I'm so sorry, some of you. So on May 12th, I attended the Hacienda Open House and Poetry Read, and Moraga Art and Public Spaces hopes that we will have the poetry read as a yearly event partnering with, partnering with St. Mary's College. On May 14th, I went to the Spring Fair created by Isabel Bennett. That was phenomenal. It was stupendous. I was amazed by how many people there were there. It was terrific. On May 16th, I attended Art and Public Spaces joint meeting with Park and Rec, and we met at the West Commons, and so that was really good. And you'll find out more about that later, I guess, in June. On May 18th, I also attended the staff luncheon created by MEF, Ellen Beans, Moraga Citizens Network, Kiwanis Historical Society, Lions and Rotary, and I hope I didn't forget anybody there. It was fabulous. On May 19th, I went to the Campo Leadership Symposium, and the topics were road verse Wade, mental health, and school admin transparency. It was terrific. It was the leadership group really did a lot of work, and I was incredibly impressed. On May 19th, I attended the MCE meeting, and MCE submitted three requests to full congressional delegations for funding these three different things. But the one that I think most people would be interested in is energy storage at critical municipal facilities like schools, fire stations, and civic centers. And they are thrilled to announce that they have been submitted, and so that's the first step. And they were endorsed by Senator Feinstein and Padilla. So I'll keep you posted on how that, how that turns out. And if those are accepted, there might be money for Moraga for battery backups. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McClure.
Yes, I have a few items here. I too attended the staff recognition luncheon at the Hacienda held outside, and I hope it's held outside every year. Very well done. Thank you, Ellen Beans. Thank you all the community groups, and of course, most of all, the stars of the show. Thank you, staff. I happen to take a look at the latest inflation information for San Francisco and Oakland, and we have good news. The rate of inflation is declining. Both total inflation and core inflation, with core inflation now standing at 2.7%. I met with the Moraga School District Superintendent. We talked about a number of items. We know about the corlet sidewalk issue. I didn't realize she really pointed out there's also an issue with a fairly dangerous left turn. So I assume staff's aware of that. I wasn't. And she also emphasized that, you know, the JM safety issues and plan, that's really important too. So you know, great examples of school safety. I know staff has them on the list. I did want to say, I noticed last time, and the mayor said she was using discretion on reading public comment that wanted to be read into the record. But there was one email read at 5:56, and there was another email read. It was not read at 4:12, and that was from a board member from the chamber. So I actually think we should have a policy on this. I know it's best efforts, but I'm going to be bringing a future agenda item. We're here to do policy, just so there's no misunderstanding. At the end of the day, I attended a CCTA board meeting that was very helpful. I also chatted with Jay Lifson, the executive director of the Lafayette Chamber. He's been in the chamber through 17 years and a business owner since the 80s. And I wanted to talk, we had a good conversation about how do you create a strong relationship between the town and the chamber. So it was just a good conversation. And then I've got a couple items on the business front, Moraga business, that I'd like to share. The first item is I have some feedback from some business constituents, and feedback is a gift. These comments are not from me, but what I heard. And this is from the last meeting. The comment is, it doesn't sound like the full town council supports businesses or the chamber. The idea that the business is better isn't, isn't what the chamber hears, and even when there is an occasional, yes, financial challenges exist and relief is needed. Making the chamber wait to present their plan until, quote, "you think it's time," and saying the chamber needs to, quote, "prove itself" is not a supportive collaborative partner. More stimulus should go to business, not unrelated government services. A report showing virtually all the 4.2 million of ARPA were earmarked at the last meeting before the chamber's next presentation on what businesses need was disappointing. So this is my comment now. Oh, no, I'm sorry. There's one more, one other person. They said, "If the town thinks they know the pulse of the community from handing out checks once, please be real. Businesses honestly don't trust the town, which has a longstanding position of non-support of businesses." And then I heard from a major landlord in town. Where is the helping hand from town of Moraga to business? And the chamber is trying to help them. Why don't you listen to them? The landlord mentioned the Lafayette Gift Card Program. Buy X, the town matches X. That program's now in its second funding. Why did you decline that? The landlord said, "I actually listened to part of the town council meeting, and all I heard at that meeting last week was negativity." So now this is my comment. So I shared with them, you know, towards the end of the meeting, we said, "We want to hear from the chamber. We want to hear their second presentation. We've asked them to work with staff, get their input, and then we would get them on the agenda." Hopefully, that was a fair summary. The second issue, and I think this is just a misunderstanding, but it relates to the town council direction on small business grants, which has resulted in three Moraga businesses being denied grants because they're nonprofits. So to just recap for everybody, the town council invited the chamber in, and in a couple weeks, they gave us several programs, one of which was grants for small businesses. The town council agreed and gave direction to staff to create a small business program with grants. Now, neither the chamber nor the town council directed these grants to exclude nonprofits. Nonprofits are eligible for grant funds. Staff wrote the small business program following the ARPA final rules, which technically separate this small business and nonprofit. And thus, three businesses were denied grants because they were in the nonprofit category, not the small business category. While there's another grant program for nonprofits, it's substantially less with more work, and other businesses that we've given grants have also gotten grants from other places. So I think we need a little cleanup here, so I'm going to be bringing a future agenda item for the town council to discuss the definition of small business, whether to include nonprofits or not, provide direction at the next meeting. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. A few additional items. On the 20th of May, I attended the monthly Moraga Liaison Meeting. And really, one reportable piece of information from Joe Ray, infection rates. And in Contra Costa County, for some period of time recently, Moraga was number one in the, in the bad category. We had the highest infection rate in all of Contra Costa County. We've apparently are doing better, but you know, the interesting thing was that all of the, forgive me, the affluent towns are the ones that are having the high infection rates, and they seem to be attributing that to people traveling again and perhaps being more exposed. It may also be that people are doing a lot more testing. It's a reminder that we really do have to be careful about the COVID, and of course, we're having a virtual meeting tonight commensurate with that. I had the pleasure of representing the town at the undergraduate ceremony for St. Mary's College on this past Saturday. It was an excellent event, really impressive. I encourage everyone to try to attend such. It's a piece of St. Mary's College that most of us don't see, and I had some good discussions with vice presidents and other members of the staff that I got to rub elbows with about a variety of town and college issues. Then, just an item of note for, for really as much of the public as I can get it out to, at the MOFD Board Meeting on the 18th of May, they are headed towards and expect to do approval, I think, at their next meeting in June, allocating a half million dollars, $500,000, to provide grants to homeowners in the MOFD districts, the three districts being Arinda, Moraga, and Canyon for fire-resistant vents. And these, these are vents, very quickly, a significant amount of the risk to fires in our home from wildfires comes from embers coming into the vents and starting fires either in your attic or down in this crawl space. And there are specialized vents, which actually, when it gets hot, will close. And one model is Vulcan, V U L C A N, in case someone wants to research it. So they're, they're offering up to $1,000 per parcel, 50% of the material cost for these vents. And so I'm making this known now in case anyone is thinking about doing this. This is one way to protect against your home catching fire during a wildfire. And I will report more as appropriate, and perhaps we can get it out on about town and otherwise, so that people are aware that this is available, because these vents cost maybe $150 apiece. And so you can easily spend a couple thousand dollars on a home just for materials alone, let alone the labor associated costs to that. Finally, for those interested in the Moraga GAD, I talked with NGO this week, and fire abatement, they tell me is happening this week. And so they're going to meet that deadline, and we'll hear more next week at the GAD meeting on Wednesday. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So first of all, in terms of reading things into the record, anything that's labeled, please read into the record. I read into the record, so if I did not do that with respect to something that said that, that was an oversight and not an exercise of discretion, so I don't think there needs to be a policy on this. Second, I too attended the May 14th AUSD Spring Fest at Moraga Commons. What a fantastic event. I mean, it was basically a celebration of student activism and engagement. There were so many groups there that are run out of our high schools, that are dedicated to kindness, to openness, to inclusion, to social justice and to activism, and it was really fantastic to have everybody together on a beautiful spring day, sort of sharing stories and, and their passion for, for their work. The staff appreciation lunch on May 18th was also terrific. I want to thank the Moraga Citizens Network and for hosting it, Ellen Beans for being a gracious and delightful host and MC. And thanks to all the community and service groups that participated and contributed, including some amazing homemade cookies. The lunch was just a reminder and a celebration of one of the things that makes this community so special, which is the spirit of volunteerism and the close collaboration between the community on the one hand and the town staff on the other. And it, of course, was also a reminder and a celebration of our staff's dedication and commitment to the citizens of this town, particularly in the two pandemic years. And just overall, it was just good to have everyone back together at the Hacienda, helping to stitch back the fabric that was torn apart during the isolation of the pandemic. That's my report, but I believe that Cynthia forgot to say something, so I'm going to give her the opportunity.
Yes, I can't believe that. I was remiss in thanking all the volunteer organizations. Ellen, Moraga Citizens Network, Rotary, Lions, Kiwanis, Moraga Garden Club, the Historical Society, MCF. I'm sure there was more. Kathy Ransom made amazing thank you gifts for the staff. But I wanted to say that it really does make a difference. It's something that's unique about Moraga, and I think sometimes as staff, we have a tendency here to hear a lot of complaints, and so it was, it was really meaningful and special to have some of the organizations there and be able to kind of just see people and chat with people. And I don't know any other cities that do that for their staff, so blessings and thank you. It's very appreciated.
Thank you, Cynthia. Okay, next agenda item is public hearings. I will open the public hearing on the master fee schedule for fiscal year 2022-23. This is an action item. We're being asked to consider a resolution that adopts an update to the town's master fee schedule. So the structure for this public hearing will be staff report, council member questions, public comments, then return to council for discussion and for action. And so, Annie, are you doing the report?
Yes, I am, Mayor Sauce. Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Sauce and members of the city council, town council. I'm here to present the resolution adopting the town of Moraga's updated master fee schedule for fiscal year 2022. Um, I'm here to present the resolution adopting the town of Maraga's updated master fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, effective July twenty-fourth. Um, some, a little bit of background, uh, I like to share a PowerPoint. So just bear with me for a moment. I'm going to share my screen. And start from the beginning. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Oh, great, great. Okay. So I would like to present to you tonight the master fee schedule for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, State of California Government Co. Section six-five-one-oh-four, six-five-nine-oh-nine-point-five and six-six-oh-one-four allowed the town to establish fees to offset the town's cost in processing permits, licenses, subdivision maps, and entitlements and other services. Uh, we publish a master fee schedule on an annual basis that provides for the charging of such fees for various services provided by our town. So the master fee schedule reflects the fees charged by all departments. And, um, I want to give a shout out to all the department directors that are here tonight. They spent a lot of hours, um, going through these master fee schedule. And they're very thoughtful in coming up with these fees. Um, so they're also here, um, if you have any questions toward my presentation, to answer any questions that you may have. So the amended, uh, the master fee is amended annually to reflect the current cost, um, the cost recovery and to add or eliminate fees as applicable. Um, as we all know, fees cannot exceed the reasonable cost of providing the service. So we were very thoughtful in coming up with these fees and making sure the hourly rate, um, is commensurate with the fees that we're charging. Effective July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, sixty days after your approval tonight, we will publish a fee and start changing the fee in our system. The revenue reflected in the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, um, is already reflected in our budget. Proposed, uh, adjustments are based on the following. We base it on the hourly bill, whoops, sorry. We base it on the hourly billing rate, uh, which reflects the cost of the benefits for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, including the benefits and overhead. The overhead raise includes administration, um, and engineering and development impact fee are adjusted annually based on the enter, engineering, um, E N R, publishing, construction cost index. So in general, we adjusted the raise to reflect the fully loaded cost of the employee, which, as I mentioned before, includes the salary rate, the benefit, and overhead. Um, we also added hourly billing rates for the new position of principal planner that we added in the current fiscal year. So that rate is reflected in the schedule. For parks and rec, we eliminated all the fees related to Wedgwood, uh, lease. And we adjusted the Maraga park rental fees. Um, we also adjusted room rental fees and added, um, some landmark. Let's say, uh, well, we added language regarding cancellation fee policy. We deleted the recreation class administrative fee and we increased the processing fee for dropping a class from eleven dollars to twelve dollars. And for planning, we adjusted various permit fees to reflect the increase in the staff time cost. And we deleted the CD, um, copy for meetings fee because, um, I mean, we don't get a lot of those requests. And we added, um, Model Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance, um, M W E L O deposit. And we added clarifying verbiage for refunds of fees. Uh, and as far as for the police, there were no adjustments that were made. So, um, we, we don't have any changes there. For public works, we did adjust the numerous public works flat fee based on the proposed hourly rates of employees to reflect the adjusted hourly rate. And in some cases, we even revised some of the minimum fee in the schedule. As for development impact fee, uh, pursuant to, I guess, oh, um, sorry, my, my screen is in my way. And, okay, I'm going to put it at the bottom. It's, it's sort of in my way. In twenty sixteen, Resolution forty-two-two-oh-six updated the development impact fees for general government, public safety, storm drainage, traffic and park development and, um, and in lieu of Parkland dedication fee as a result of a comprehensive fee study. Uh, and per Resolution forty-two, twenty sixteen, the established development impact fee shall be modified annually effective July first of each year, based on the change in April, Engineering New Record Construction Cost Index. So the April Engineering New Record Construction Index was, uh, I believe was, um, was, let me see, fourteen point eight. Yes, um, so in April twenty-twenty-one, uh, the E N R, actually, the E N R for April twenty-twenty-two was fifteen thousand one-oh-three-point-eight-one as compared to eleven thousand eight-four-nine-point-three-one in April of twenty-twenty-one, which represents a fourteen point eight increase in the CCI. And, um, in twenty sixteen, Resolution ten, twenty sixteen, established a law Miranda fee and financing authority. The L F F A A Development Traffic Impact Fee based on a twenty-fifteen NEXA study. Per Resolution ten, twenty sixteen, the fee shall be automatically increased annually by the change in the September Engineering New Record Construction Cost Index, uh, for San Francisco. The E N R for September twenty-twenty-one was thirteen thousand five-hundred-eighty-three dollars compared to thirteen thousand five dollars in September twenty-twenty, which represents a four point four percent increase. Um, the, oops, sorry. The, my screen is in the way, uh, of my presentation, so I'm going to pull it down a little bit, but the L F F A Development Impact Fees are increased by four point four percent. So an annual report on each development impact fee is made available, uh, to the public and reviewed by the city council pursuant to government co-section six-six-zero-zero-six B. Uh, with that, um, I would like to end my presentation. And if there's any question with specific to the departments, all the department directors are available to answer any questions that you have. And upon the adoption of this resolution, amending the town's master fee schedule, we will implement the fee effective July twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Annie. And if you don't mind, oh, yeah, there you go. Right in my mind. Thank you so much. Um, all right. Any questions from council members? Steve.
There's always one. The, uh, Annie, you know, a great, great update, uh, very understandable. Uh, the question I have is I did not see any references to development fees for ADUs or affordable housing. And I understand they're at least reduced, but I, I'm surprised that we don't have some reference just to, um, establish what they are, if, if anything, or even if they're not, uh, there, I think we should somehow note it because we have, you know, development fees for the different categories of, of developments.
Um, that's a great question. Um, what I can do is look into that. I believe Afshar, who's the director for planning, is also available to discuss that. Um, so we, we can certainly look into it. I know a lot of, um, cities and towns are, are, you know, expediting ADUs as well. So, yeah, that's a very good point. We can certainly look into that.
Yeah, I didn't see it called out in the, uh, scheduled fees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Afshar, did you want to add anything?
Um, I'm not clear, um, if council member Walaki is asking us to reduce ADU fees or if he's just asking, do we have ADU fees? It's my understanding that ADU fees are in the fee schedule already.
They're not. They're, we, I, I reviewed it. We're going to have to, we're going to have to look into this. So there's a lot going on. So we might have to bring back a cleanup.
Yeah, I, I, I tried to find them off shot. I, I can't find references to ADUs or, uh, you know, reduced fees for affordable, you know, housing in, in the, uh, those, those three categories of very low income and low, uh, low income. Uh, yeah. Um, if, if we're going to, if we're going to use those, uh, you know, maybe that's not determined yet, but, um, we certainly have ADUs.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mike?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just curious, and this would, um, be a question for the town manager. So over the last year, have, have we gotten complaints on any specific fees? I know there's, oh, government costs too much, but other than that, any specific, hey, this fee is really out of line? Any feedback like that?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, I'll let some of the other directors pop it up and state if that's been the case, but, uh, no, not to my knowledge.
That's, that's good to hear. And, and
Our fees are, you know, our fees are all based on the cost of providing the service. So we don't make money on anything that we do. So there is a methodology that's followed in terms of, um, you know, hourly rates. And many of our larger fees are actually based on the cost of service. So we have hours that are charged to the account for the various different, um, tasks that are completed.
Okay, that's great. And the, the other question was just curious. I mean, police looks like a really good deal, but when I don't, our, our costs go up in those categories, it may not be material, but, um, just wondering.
I, I don't think I understand your question, but you're
There's no increase in the, in the police fees.
Yeah, actually, and when you look at the revenue, you'll find that we're projecting a decrease in actual revenue because there's less activity. But I can say, I think, I can't remember how much the police revenue is, but it's like seventy-seven thousand dollars in our cost for police services. It was like three million dollars. So they're inconsequential. That's a public service that we provide, a just a general public service.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, um, that I will open up to public comment. Any public comment on the master fee schedule?
Um, can I actually interrupt for just a second? I think Afshar has some information on ADUs that I would like her to share. Um.
Yes, please, Afshar.
Thank you. I just, um, looked at our fee schedule very quickly and it is in the fee schedule, uh, for ADUs. We are taking an eighteen hundred dollar deposit, uh, for ADUs. Um, and it's line number nine, and it's formally called secondary living units. We now call it accessory dwelling unit.
Um, what about the development impact fees? How do we charge or do we charge development impact fees? I know some of them are waived and some of them should be smaller. Are you aware of that? Sorry, I don't mean to put you on, on the spot.
I'm just trying to get to the development impact.
Yeah, I didn't see it there. We're going to have to get back to you. Anyway, sorry about that. We might have a cleanup. So, go ahead.
All right, um, thank you. Um, any other questions, Steph? Okay, let me then open this to public comment. Um, I see no hands raised, so I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion.
I'll be glad to move it if you would like.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I move that we adopt the town of Maraga's updated master fee schedule for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, effective July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All right, uh, roll call, vote, Councilmember Macor. Oh, I'm sorry, Steve, you're on mute.
On mute. I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear. Uh, town manager saying that we're going to look into some of these, these fees. Uh, will it be brought back then, or do we want to just table it for the moment?
We'll bring it back if, um, there's any changes. We'll just bring back that one change.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, um, roll call, vote, Councilmember Macor?
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda?
Yes.
Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walaki?
Yes.
Mayor Sauce, yes, passes unanimously. Annie, thank you very much for that report and for the schedule and, um, your presentation. Okay, um, and so I will now close the public hearing. And we will move on to ordinances, resolution, and requests for action. Uh, item A is the Bullinger Canyon Study Area rezoning. Um, this is not an action item. We are not reopening or reconsidering the zoning decisions that we made a few weeks ago. Rather, we're being asked to consider and provide input on the general plan amendments and the Maraga municipal code changes that would effectuate those prior decisions. Um, so the structure is staff report, council member questions, public comments, council member comments and input. And we are joined by Barry Miller, the head of our consulting team. So, uh, Barry, I don't know if you're kicking it off or Afshar is, but, um, you, you guys have the stage.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, and Barry, if you would like to, um, put the PowerPoint up and I can do introductions. So first of all, there is a whole team of us. Uh, so it's myself, the director of planning, uh, Barry Miller and consultants, uh, and also staff, um, partners and goes through many of the changes with staff. So when I say staff, it's not just planning staff. Um, we discussed this with, um, uh, MOFD and Dave Winnakers here tonight, Chief King, Sean Knapp, uh, Karen Murphy, and of course, our town manager. Um, so I, thank you. Um, so this has been a town council um, effort since twenty nineteen. Town council identified rezoning for the study area as a goal and priority. Uh, so the town is taking a comprehensive advanced planning initiative that we've identified and we've put a budget to it as well. Uh, we've identified as it as a goal and priority, and it includes several components. And the components are the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-thirty-one housing element, which is required by state law. And this is in response to the Rena allocation, uh, which is updated every eight years on an eight-year cycle. And for the town of Maraga, um, it is one thousand one hundred eighteen new units. And we don't have to build those units, but we have to rezone for those units. Along with that, it's, is the rezoning of key parcels, which we've had, uh, several discussions on. And then we also have focused general plan updates. Uh, phase one of the updates is the internal consistency with the housing element to meet the, um, state safety and circulation element, uh, mandates. And then phase two will also be the update of the remaining, uh, general plan. Another component and an important component is the Bullinger rezoning. Uh, and the program level E I R covering all the actions that are outlined on this slideshow. So what this will allow is for predictability of review and certainty of process. Um, can I have the next slide, please? Thank you. So in January twenty-twenty-two, as we kicked off this effort, um, a white paper was done and a white paper, I feel like it really is much more than a white paper. We looked at the background, we looked at research, we went into past documents. We did an extensive amount of research and I want to recognize Aaron Welch because he really undertook that process. And unfortunately, he's not here tonight. Um, but he also looked at zoning options. Uh, in January twenty-fifth, we had a neighborhood meeting, which was extensively, uh, where we did an extensive outreach, um, through social media. Um, uh, we, um, outreach through, um, uh, through, um, uh, mailers as well to the neighborhood. Uh, and then once we held the neighborhood meeting, which I believe went for like an hour and a half, and we got extensive feedback from the neighborhood. Uh, we conducted a town council study session on February ninth. Uh, at the town council study session, um, several various options were presented. And there were four options, in particular, for parcel group three. At that time, council provided direction of, to establish a new residential rural. Design, rural residential designation with one dwelling unit per five acres. Um, and then, based on town council direction, text has been developed, um, and staff is, um. Uh, has developed the zoning language and respective standards, as well as general plan amendments. Uh, so staff is requesting, uh, tonight, that the provisions of the new rural residential zone. Uh, be evaluated by council and provide direction to us, and if there are other modifications, um, we would like to. Um, uh, get the, get that feed, feedback and input. Um, and as I said, throughout each of these steps, we've been reaching out to property owners. Um, as well, including the largest property owner, Dave Brizoni. Um, I also wanna give an update, uh, we were supposed to have a planning commission meeting on May seventeenth. Uh, it was canceled due to lack of a quorum, uh, however, the meeting was held last night. Uh, via Zoom as a special meeting, and, um, we will discuss the comments from the planning commission. And the additional neighborhood impact, uh, uh, feedback that we got from last night, and we'll discuss that as part of this report. Uh, so tonight, we are looking at the drafting of new zoning designations and the map, and conforming general plan amendments. It's a very focused discussion, and this item discusses the general plan in zoning designations only. We do not have a development application, and there is no project at this time under consideration. Uh, so at this time, I would like to hand over, uh, the presentation to Barry Miller, uh, to go over the study area, thank you.
Thank you, Afsa, uh, good evening, council members and members of the public, Barry Miller from Barry Miller Consulting. Uh, what you see on the slide is the location of the Bullinger Canyon Study Area. And this is the central eastern part of Maraga, just east of Saint Mary's College, off of Bullinger Canyon Road. It's a four hundred and twenty-three acre area that's comprised of twenty parcels, there are thirteen different landowners. Uh, within the area, and this has been designated a study area since the adoption of the first Maraga general plan. Uh, at your February ninth meeting, we gave you quite a bit of historic detail and context, uh, about the history of the area. Why it was designated a study area initially, and why it's remained a study area over the years. Uh, we provided that context to the planning commission in our presentation last night as well. So the current zoning for the area, again, it's both general planned and zoned as a study area. And this is intended as a temporary designation while the area is studied and opportunities and constraints are evaluated. Uh, you can see the surrounding zoning, and that red line is the town boundary, so the area to the east and north of that line. Would be other communities, uh, east is Contra Costa County, unincorporated. Where the zoning is primarily one dwelling unit per five acres, uh, to the north and northeast in Lafayette. One dwelling unit per ten and one dwelling unit per five acres in that city. Uh, to the west is the Bluffs neighborhood, where the zoning is one dwelling unit per one acre. And then to the southwest is the college zone that applies to Saint Mary's property. Uh, again, we provided quite a bit of context and background information, uh, so we won't go into that detail again. A lot of that is in the staff report and linked, uh, what we brought to you last time was essentially a proposal that the, uh. The, the layout of the, the configuration of the properties and topography. Uh, really lends itself to three different property groups or parcel groups within the four hundred and twenty-three acres. And you can see those identified here, and we did talk about zoning options for each of these areas at your February meeting. Uh, with the general consensus that area one would receive the one dwelling unit per acre zoning that applies in the Bluffs neighborhood. Area two would receive a non-mo, so open space designation, that is the Harvey Ranch property, one hundred and thirty-six acres. And they're in negotiations with the John Muir Land Trust to set that land aside as open space, uh, and that left. Area three, parcel group three, uh, where we presented a number of options, and. Uh, the direction provided was to proceed with rural residential, which is one dwelling unit per five acres. Comparable to the densities in Lafayette and Contra Costa County. Uh, since the time of that meeting, we've had interactions with the number of property owners, as Afsa said. The two parcels that are, uh, have the red stars, and I'm just gonna, uh, flip a switch here, and they're gonna magically change from parcel group one. To parcel group three, uh, in communication with the property owners, they expressed a preference to be part of the new rural residential zone. Those are the largest parcels in group one, and they're both, uh, they're not quite five acres, but one is about three point eight, the other's about three point five. Uh, one has active agriculture, the other has a large area of open space and is. Contiguously owned with the parcel next to it, so there was logic in, uh, in, in tweaking that boundary a bit. So what we're here this evening to talk about is the new zoning district that will apply to that area three. And this is what the zoning map looks like, uh, inclusive of, of the, uh, modifying the boundary of parcel groups one and three. So here again, you can see, um, on the left, the existing zoning, on the right, the proposed zoning. With the, that group of, uh, about eight or nine parcels, moving into the one dwelling unit per acre zone. The rural residential zone, and then the, uh, most, non-mo, so open space zone, again, in context. So the new rural residential zone will apply to two hundred and seventy acres of that four twenty-three. The intent of the zone is to promote a rural character, I won't read what's on the screen here, but I think the key is that this is a. A residential zone, but it's very low density, and the intent is to maintain the rural character of the area. Uh, there are seven parcels, and we've calculated the maximum build out with the current parcel configuration is approximately fifty units. I wanna emphasize, that's a theoretical number, there's no proposal to build fifty units. It's unlikely that there would be fifty units under the current parcel configuration and the, um. The topography and other factors, uh, but that's theoretically what's possible at that density. So getting into the uses and standards in the new rural residential zone, uh, residential is a permitted use in this zone. It, uh, does not require a conditional use permit, agriculture is also a permitted use in this zone. There are a couple of other, uh, activities such as dog care and training. And, uh, mentioned already, the five acre minimum lot size, I wanna emphasize here that that, uh. Is that clustering of that allowable density is permitted, so that the number of units on a property can be concentrated. In a smaller area on that property, uh, which would allow more of the site to be protected as open space. The, um, minimum that's in the draft regulations is thirty thousand square feet. Again, the total number of units on the property could not exceed, uh, the, the land area divided by the five acres. But that density could be clustered, the basic standards for the district are twenty-five foot setbacks on all sides of any structure. A hundred feet of street frontage for any lot, and a hundred and fifty, sorry, a hundred and forty foot lot depth and width development standards. Uh, if there's a project that's larger than ten acres or a project that requires a subdivision, there are provisions in the draft code. That would require, uh, detailed site and development analysis, similar to the study that's required in the current. Uh, zoning and general plan for the study area. In order to create the new rural residential zone, we had to go through the existing municipal code and essentially. Do a cleanup of references to the S-zone, which is being deleted. And add references to the new RR-zone, which is being created. Uh, most of those I would describe as administrative changes, not substantive. Uh, there are a couple of changes that relate to animal keeping. That were made to recognize that there is now a new zoning classification in between open space and one dwelling unit per acre. Uh, one of the issues that came up as we were doing the, uh, zoning regulations, and this is in response to a public comment from a resident. In the area is that, that there were some concern about the way agriculture was defined in the draft, and, and actually, this is a definition. That is in the existing municipal code, and, uh, and it just sort of came up in the context of, um. Creating a new rural residential zone, uh, revisiting what, how agriculture was defined in the existing municipal code. We had not initially proposed any changes to that definition, uh, but given that there are a couple of properties. Uh, where agriculture is occurring in the study area, there was some concern that, um, the, uh. Uses for packing, treating, and storing produce were not addressed in the current definition, so as part of this process, we've also proposed. Uh, expanding a little bit on the definition of agriculture, this is really, um, built on the county, Contra Costa County definition of agriculture. The crossed out language is deleted, and the underscore, underlined language in red is to be added. Uh, to the definition, uh, there's some follow-up on this that I'll mention, or that I think Afsa may mention later on, because the. Planning Commission had quite a bit of, um, conversation about this language yesterday at their meeting, and we did hear from some members of the public. Uh, some concerns with this language as well, which we, uh, will discuss in another slide. Uh, moving on to the general plan amendments, uh, again, the general plan is really the overarching framework, the policy framework for zoning. So if we're changing the zoning, we need to kind of work up and change the general plan as well. Uh, some of the amendments that are necessary are deleting the S-designation, the study designation. In the general plan and on the plan map, and adding the rural residential designation. There are some specific goals and policies and implementa, and implementation measure in the two thousand and two plan. Related to the study area that are proposed for deletion, uh, and then the general plan map also needs to be modified. Uh, I wanna emphasize here that as you, um, begin to dig into the two thousand and two general plan. It's hard to stop at just the editing to reflect, uh, the Bullinger. Uh, area, because there's a lot more in the general plan that will need to be edited and amended. Uh, before we're done with the comprehensive advanced planning initiative, so we've only made the amendments absolutely necessary. For consistency with this zoning action, but there are more amendments that will be coming to you later in the year, and in, uh, twenty twenty-three. As we move in to, uh, other, other amendments needed for the housing changes that we're making and the rezoning. Proposals for the Reem Center and other areas. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Afsa, we have just a couple more slides to summarize our public input and last night's commission meeting. And then we will, uh, move toward council questions, thanks.
Thank you, Barry, so as a result of, um, publishing the May seventeenth. Um, planning commission packet, which was then, uh, canceled because of the lack of quorum. Uh, we did receive a public input, um, there were two property owners who requested. Um, that their properties be designated from one dwelling unit per acre to residence, to rural residential. And they both live at the end of Joseph Drive, um, the first is Kelly Greest. Um, and I actually went out at, um, her invitation to take a look at the property and to take a tour of the property. And the second one is the captains, uh, and I wanna mention a third one, um, it's, uh, Terry Corby. At nineteen fifty-seven Joseph Drive, and this came in rather late yesterday, so it hasn't been, um, designated yet. But we would have to take a look at that one as well. Uh, there were concerns about limitations on agricultural processing and future of agriculture activities from. Uh, operators of these small vineyards, uh, the largest landowner, uh, Dave Brizoni, who owns a hundred and eighty-six acres. Has requested one dwelling unit per acre designation, and he also may, um, discuss. Brought this up at the public comments last night during the planning commission. Um, and then there were several property owners, both on Valley Hill Drive and within, um, the Bluffs neighborhood. Who continually have concerns about traffic, safety, and evacuation capacity. At the planning commission, uh, last night, um, there was, uh, some discussion about the definition of agriculture. And modifications in order to avoid a subjective language. Uh, the concerns raised by the planning commission is, what is the threshold for objectionable? Um, they felt that that was too subjective, and would the definition also apply to existing activities? Um, the planning commission also was concerned that this is a significant undertaking. And whether there was sufficient time for property owners' input at the public hearings, uh, because the public hearing. Uh, limit is three minutes, uh, per comment. Um, I do wanna say that the planning commission allowed a second round of public hearings last night, a public comment last night. Um, to allow for additional time, uh, there was some comments regarding the congestion and safety. Along Saint Mary's Road, this is to reflect comments also heard from, uh, many of the residents in the Bluffs and the Valley Hill neighborhood. Uh, overall, the commission voted five zero to move forward the staff recommendation to town council. Um, with further changes to be made to the definition of agriculture. Uh, one commission member was absent last night, and another commission member had to recuse himself because he actually lives. Um, in that neighborhood, um, so there was a conflict of interest, so that's why there was five, um. Commission members last night. So the next steps are, um, we will take, uh, comments and feedback from council. And continue to refine the language, um, council will review a draft housing element, uh, on July thirteenth. And I do wanna preface that and say that the planning commission will review the draft housing element, uh, on June twenty-first. Uh, with, and they will provide recommendations that will then come to council on July thirteenth. Staff and the consultants will continue to work on the EIR for the comprehensive planning initiative. Uh, we will also continue to work on the general plan amendments and, um, continue to work with property owners. Uh, we anticipate to release, uh, the draft EIR for the advanced planning initiative in the fall. Uh, and in December, we will come back with the final zoning and general plan text provided for adoption. And I do also wanna add one additional comment, that when we, uh, receive comment and feedback from council in July. At that time, the draft housing element will go to HCD for first round of review. Uh, and that first round of review is really critical, uh, so that we get, um, HCD's, um, review. In a timely manner, and I'm, what I'm hearing is it takes about ten to twelve weeks right now. So, um, and that is the presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Afsa, thank you very, very much, um, all right, let me open this up to council member questions, Sona.
Thank you, thank you for the, uh, very helpful presentation, so my question, um, I'm looking at. I'm looking at attachment B and page two. And I really like this section eight point two-two point one zero zero about site development analysis. Um, so if you could just help me better understand, is this language here about, you know, relying on certified professionals? Is this general lan, language, or is A through C, A through F listed here tailored or specific to this? Um, land, this site?
So, back in, um. February, when we brought, when we were having a discussion with council, some council members wanted us to further take a look at. Um, how we would, uh, evaluate the site. Um, so we started by looking at the Mosel language, uh, but we felt that it needed to be much more specific. That the analysis needed to be prepared by certified professionals, and so we actually put that. It should be done by, you know, um, a geotechnical, uh, analysis, uh, fire hazard severity zone. Um, as defined by CAL FIRE, um, biological resources, so we felt that these were pretty critical, especially in this area. Um, and that these be very specific and may be defined.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yes, um, so last meeting, we had, you know, a really good conversation about the area being, you know, five acre, ten acre. We talked about the non-mo, so open space, or a new designation, residential rural, and, you know, it was a close call, but, you know, I, I felt. Pretty good about that, the, the surprise to me in the staff report is new information, at least to me, is this, I guess. Plan development clustering with lots at thirty thousand. I guess, planned development clustering with lots at 30,000 square feet. So we said the area is five acres, but now we're saying you could have three quarters of an acre clustered. But you've also got the five and 10 acre lots around it. So how do we, how do we deal with that? That just seems inconsistent with what we said last meeting.
Sure, I'll let Barry respond to that. And then if I need to jump in, I can also jump in.
Thanks. And thanks, council member Claire. That's a, that's a good question. And really it's for consistency with the approach that's taken in the non-Mosso open space areas where there are similar provisions that would allow clustering. The idea here is, and this is really rooted in the general plan, that clustering allows you to preserve more of the area as open space and set aside land with sensitive resources and focus any development potential in an area that has the least impact on the environment and may be more accessible or have lower, lower hazard levels and so forth. So it's a townwide policy really to permit the clustering of density or the transfer of density, for that matter, to another property, which is also something we've talked about. So, so I guess the question comes down to is 30,000 square feet, the right number? And that, that's, you know, for the council to provide direction, if you feel that it should be a different number than 30,000.
And, and maybe Barry, it looks to me like for non-Mosso open space or for open spaces, 40,000, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And I was just, go ahead.
I, yeah, I was gonna add that, you know, the idea of using 40,000 to make this consistent with the, the non-Mosso open space is something that we, we could consider. We did talk about that internally when we were drafting this.
Yeah. And actually I see some references to the general plan and there's one that talks about clustering, but I also see inconsistencies and actually contradictions. So I'd like to point out general plan LU 1.9. And the title says, quote, cluster housing to protect open space. And, you know, what you talked about clustering to preserve open space in sensitive areas, in many cases clustering is a great idea. But this general plan provision also says the following quote. However, do not place cluster housing in locations that are visually prominent from the scenic corridor or where it would adversely impact existing residential areas. There's another provision LU 1.13, which talks about generally development on residential parcels. Permit the development of residential parcels only when it is found that such development will, one, not have an adverse visual impact and is compatible with existing development. So to me, I see issues here that's conflicting with what's been written.
Okay.
Just, I don't know if you have a comment on that. I was just seeing your perspective or, you know, we can move on.
Yeah, I would say it's not necessarily inconsistent. I think you have to evaluate both the general plan language and the zoning language and that looking, you may, you know, be able to look for ways to cluster development in a way that is consistent with that policy, depending on the property. And it may be more difficult on some properties than others.
Is there a way for us to, I mean, do we have to, this is, again, we said, we want five acres. This is five acre minimum residential rural. I think we'd be in a good place there. Do, do we have to follow the, the plan development in this area? And we could cite these two general plan items as reasons why we're not. Is that something we could pursue?
You could pursue that, but you could also reference the two general plan policies in, in the, in the zoning text in some way. So you can, you can create a link to, so that you get consistency between the two.
I, I want to add that a developer, any developer can do the plan development as it currently is. And if there is, let's say, let's say clustering and they are subdividing the lots, they would have to actually go through the subdivision map act, which is a California, state of California act and law. And we follow that law. So it would be an entire process that they would have to go through as well as for plan development. Those are formal applications that, that they would have to submit. And then at that time, we can also ask for additional studies. And it will go through public hearings and it will go through planning commission, council.
And there would need to be
A walk in the park.
But there would also need to be a finding
Yes.
That, that there would need to be a finding that the plan development as proposed promotes the rural character by providing very low density, single family residential uses and ag uses. So they would go back to the definition of rural residential in the general plan and, and the zoning. I also think it's important to note that the current code does have provisions that allow open space to go through the plan development process. So it would be somewhat inconsistent with the code to have a zoning district that did not allow that process to occur.
Okay. And yet inconsistent with the general plan, but let me move on. Anyway, let me pause here. Presiding officer, I have one more question, but I figured let me pause for others.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate the courtesy, Mike. Other questions? Um, if, if, if I may, Afshar, you, you mentioned that there were two property owners who requested that their properties be moved from one DUA to rural residential and, and we're doing that, is that right?
Under the current map that was put up on the screen, Barry Miller did show the two properties that we've already kind of shifted towards rural residential, the ones with the stars. But I did also mention that there is a third one. And we can, you know, we didn't have time to address that because that came, that request came very late yesterday. But we can also take a look at that. It's 1957 Joseph Drive. But if we do that one, I think we should also shout to the other property owner in between the captains and 1957, which is 1963. So we need to do a little bit of work on, on that before we make the adjustments.
Okay, but, but the two that came in, you know, in time for us to do something, the answer is yes, right?
Yes.
Do we, okay. And then am I correct then that that, that the proposed changes to the, the code and to the, the general plan are not going to disallow any existing uses for the properties where people are up and running?
That's correct. So the existing uses would remain as is. And they would allow to, they would be allowed to continue. In effect, they'd be grandfathered in.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Mike, you had a follow up? Oh, as did Steve. All right.
I haven't gone first yet, Mike, for just
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Okay, yeah. Zoning for vendor culture is something I have history in from the planning commission in the 2016, 2017 era. And, you know, we argued long and hard about a number of key issues. With the changes in ag, definition of agriculture, is that, is that going to be a real problem? Or are we massaging?
So based on the feedback and input we received from the captains in particular, this would allow them to continue and it would allow also for the processing. But we are not doing the heavy industrial uses like slaughterhouses. And we're also prohibited cannabis.
Right. I'm talking about last night, you said, as a result of last night, there, you're gonna change the definition of agriculture?
Well, that's as a result of planning commission input. They wanted less subjectivity. So we can discuss that, but in, in particular regarding the viticulture, this would allow the viticulture to continue and also to continue processing as an ancillary use.
I think an important distinction that from this rezoning as to what occurred in 2015 through 2017 is that we're not addressing events or tasting rooms or anything like that. We're just addressing kind of the standard agricultural uses. We're not bringing that up and trying to resolve that issue.
Right. And we tried to and we did not succeed. So, well, just questions, I guess, on, on, or notes on page seven of the report, just, and this is a minor thing, but there's a first paragraph at the top of the page, fourth line up from the bottom, it makes reference to one acre per acre, it should be per five acres, I think. And I, I note that, you know, the, the question with regard to cluster housing, both pages, on page A3 of the proposed changes to the general plan include references on those two general plan paragraphs, LU 1.11 and LU 1.14 with regard to rural residential being included. Let's see here. On page in, in attachment B, on page two of three on 8.22.070 and 8.22.080. And this is the draft, draft text for the zoning. One of those says title and one says code. I think they're supposed to both be code. Is that right?
Yes, it should be code.
Okay. I see, I think I have just one or two more. That's it. And any other, no, that's it. Good, thanks.
I, I, council member Wall, Vice Mayor Walaki, I also believe in attachment A. Policy LU 1.11. The last sentence. I think you had suggested where it says however, comma, do not place cluster housing in locations. I think you had suggested possibly that it be however, comma, minimize cluster housing in locations.
Right. And, you know, Mike, I, I'm okay with leaving it as is. We're not going to have too many more potential violations of that. I, I think minimize is more consistent with what we really have. Ie, we have some cluster housing in Palos, Colorado, which is, you know, yet to be built. But you will see that from Maraga Road and likewise you can see Bella Vista for better or for worse from a, a Rain Boulevard. And those are two examples. And, you know, the, the Maraga Center specific plan along Maraga Way, I suspect we will have the same challenge there. So I think minimize is more realistic, but, you know, that, that may just be semantics.
All right. Do you have any other questions, Steve?
No, ma'am. I, I realize those really weren't questions, but they, I just wanted to get them out there.
There was a little inflection at the end of the sentence that suggested a question mark.
I, I, I apologize. I, I profess my violation.
No worries. Any other questions of staff? Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've got a question kind of going from where Steve is on, on, on the part, and I don't see exactly where he was talking about, but for rural residential, is it possible to put that grouping as, as minimal? Could you use minimal, you know, and also going from what Mike was talking about? Is it possible to, to put that for rural residential? Am I making myself at all clear?
I think, I think what we're hearing from the council, and this is something that you can provide us direction on, is that what it currently says in terms of 30,000 square feet is probably you'd like it to be larger lots and you'd like there to be more specificity in terms of minimizing clustering. So we can go back and take another attempt at doing that, if that's what you so choose.
So I'm going to ask a, a kind of, I'm going to try to make it a question. I, I, I agreed with what Mike was, where Mike was going. And I was also surprised and I, I would like to know if other council members, here's my question, were surprised after hearing the neighbors and our last conversation about this. I assumed that it would be completely reflecting the neighbors, the one dwelling per five acres. And I was okay with that, but then getting the staff report, I was alarmed, I must say, that, that there was yet a different take, and that was the grouping of the, of the houses. And I understand it's, you know, environmentally, that is exactly what you want to do. So it's, it's a different, difficult call. However, for this particular property, this 186 acres, I think that I would agree with what Mike was saying, his direction. And also I think the vice mayor was kind of going in that direction. So I'm hoping that the other council members will agree with me that this is a unique property and that grouping might not be correct for this. So there was my question.
I think Teresa, we should probably discuss this during the discussion period.
Probably.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Mike?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, finish up. I have a couple here. And again, referencing last meeting, you know, it was a close call between non-Mosso open space and residential rural. And one of the things about residential rural, it's a permitted use, which gave some clarity. Non-Mosso open space was conditional. You have to make your case and get approval. So there's a line of questioning that maybe assumed and known, but I'd like to confirm this. Is it possible with the permitted use at application in the rural residential area? If the application has units which don't comply to the general plan, those units would not be allowed, for example, steep slopes, landslides, et cetera. Is that correct?
Now, that is one of the reasons that, why you would allow clustering is to, is to create the opportunity to achieve that number of units. Otherwise you would be left with areas that could be undevelopable.
Correct. But let's say even in a cluster, oh, there's landslides here as an example. So I'm just saying, you know, it's a hypothetical, but hypothetically you get an application and the general plan says you cannot do that. I just want to confirm then therefore those units, there'd have to be some change made to that application.
And I could be mitigation measures as well. We would, you don't have an application before us. So we would have to evaluate that application at the time of submittal based on where it's located, based on the studies, based on an entire environment, environmental review and the mitigations that they're proposing.
And I would like to add as well that, that all projects do need to be consistent with the general plan and the zoning. So there is a process, for example, when an application comes in, that planning staff will review for compliance with the objective standards in both the general plan and the zoning and, and note any inconsistencies. Because projects do need to be consistent with the, with the general plan and the zoning standards.
And continuing down that line of thought, therefore, the actual number of units that end up being approved after mitigation, clustering, every effort possible may or may not be less than the permitted number, the permitted use number. Is that correct?
So typically when you have a zoning put in place, there's certainly a, a range up to a certain number of units. So those units, however, would need to comply with, with a criteria. You know, sometimes that's addressed through conditions of approval and or other criteria, for example, mitigation measures, as Director Hamid had mentioned. So, so certainly, but that's through the development review process. Staff would have to look at specific applications as, as those come in to ensure consistency with those general plan and zoning criteria.
The statement, it is possible, may or may not be different than the permitted number of units.
Well, and, and again, we'd have to look specifically. Well, a- and again, we'd have to look specifically.
Yeah, I know. This is hypothetical. Yeah.
At, at a project that, um, when a, when a project comes in.
Right. And I would just like to add, what I've just said here is consistent with any application in the town of Maraga and any development in the town of Maraga. Is that correct?
What I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Could you, could you repeat the question?
Yeah. I just wanted to, to say that, is it true that what I've just outlined in terms of getting an application, evaluating to the general plan, mitigation, clustering, the number of units may or may not be different than the permitted use? Would that process that I just described is consistent for any application in the town of Maraga and any development in the town of Rock?
So any application that comes in does need to be consistent with the general plan and the zoning. And is reviewed, obviously, on a project by project basis with respect to issues such, such as mitigations and any adjustments. But certainly, as a general rule, projects need to be consistent with the general plan and zoning.
Okay, my last question. So now, let's say hypothetically, um, we move forward, we get an application. And let's say the maximum number of units are approved. We have SB nine, okay? SB nine says you can take a lot. You can split the lot in, with two duplexes, that's four units. And each of the duplexes can have an ADU, so that's six units. So one lot, it can become six residential units with multiple cars, as an example. Um, is that a possibility in this situation here? That what we think we're approving in terms of the number of units could actually, under SB nine, be many, many more units, many, many more cars?
So with respect to SB nine, as well as the ADU law, there are provisions that apply to any lot in the town. Um, that ADUs are allowed and, um, and certain types of lot splits, lot splits are allowed. So, um, so that, that, that is again, a general new state law, um, with respect to allowing those types of units.
So that is a possibility.
So certainly, that's, that's a, that's a possibility on, on any lot in town in order, you know, that an ADU, for example, could come in.
Or lot splitting.
Or, or certain lot splits in accordance with.
Right. And that's a state law. That's not something that the town put in or the town can do anything about. It's a state law. Okay. Fine. That ends my questions. Thank you very much.
Any other questions of staff? Um, but I just, I just want to confirm what I just heard, which is basically that this notion of clustering is not basically by right. Every, the, the, the provisions of the general plan still apply. So there, there has to be consistency, um, a, and, and that is determined on, once you have a, an application in front of you. Is that right?
Th- that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, any other questions? Okay, I'm going to close the questions. It's now time for public comment. So, um, first, I just want to say that we got a lot of emails from members of the public. Uh, I want to thank you. I want to assure you that we read them. And we are considering them. Um, and I also want to confirm that we did not receive any written comments where there was a specific request made to read them into the record. So there is nothing to read into the record. Um, and so I will then open it to public comment from folks who are, uh, joining us by Zoom. Uh, if you would use your rate, raise hand feature, again, just a reminder, please limit your comments to, uh, three minutes or less. And I, I will keep time and I, you know, just want to let you know, I may interrupt you if things go a little bit long. Um, so with that, I see, uh, a raised hand. I- is this D, DB one? Is that you, Dave?
Hi, yes, it is. Can you hear me?
Hi, Dave Brizoni. Uh, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, I want to start off by making a couple of clarifications. Uh, first of all, uh, the Brizoni family is the owner of the property. I'm not the sole owner, so I have, you know, mom and siblings. So I don't want you creating more strife within my family than, you know, than, than they're already. Uh, and second of all, uh, I have not requested that the zoning, uh, be one dwelling unit per acre. I have always said that, uh, you know, you should be looking at our property in a similar manner that you've looked at other properties, including Sanders Ranch, which is a two dwelling units per acre. Uh, and also, uh, our property was originally zoned. Uh, and when the town incorporated, the zoning was R fifteen, which is basically three dwelling units per acre. And that's how the bluff was developed. So I think all of those, uh, uh, you know, densities should be looked at. I also want to be clear that I think the, uh, one dwelling unit per five, uh, zoning density is confiscatory and does not allow us to, uh, bring in utilities. And frankly, we don't even know if there's enough groundwater to support, uh, wells and septic tanks for, uh, any number of units. So I just want to be clear on that. Second of all, I think, uh, council member, uh, Mop, Mopers comment on chapter eight point two two, uh, talking about site and development standards. This is uniquely being applied to our, uh, applied to our property, which I think is inappropriate. I don't think we have that issue on any other property. Uh, you know, I don't, I didn't have a chance to thoroughly, um, analyze and review that, but I think on all residential zoning, I have not seen that and I'm not familiar with it. So, uh, I also want to re- reiterate that uh, the EIR and analysis of the impact is, is, uh, is inadequate. Um, it, because it doesn't do the proper alternatives analysis, uh, which should actually cover the appropriate range of housing uh, that is possible within Bolinger Valley. And that not only includes what our property was zoned, uh, when we were incorporated, that's R fifteen or three dwelling units per acre. Uh, similar to the, uh, um, Sanders Ranch in Palos, Colorado, Colorado. That was two dwellings per acre. And even the, uh, adjacent, um, area on, at the end of Joseph Drive, which you are now designating, uh, potentially to be one dwelling per acre. So I believe the EIR in order to be proper, should be analyzing those impacts, and it will be inadequate if it does not study that. Uh, second of all, I'd like to, uh, comment the, you know, the current study designation, uh, eight point six oh does permit agriculture. Uh, but it also, uh, under the conditional uses, uh, says that all uses other than agriculture are permitted on the issuance of a permit. So that's obviously a very big range. And the modifications that you are proposing severely limit our ability to achieve what is currently allowed under a conditional use. And some of those conditional uses are, uh, you know, um, dude ranch, uh, you know, riding facilities, um, uh, wineries, commercial kitchens, et cetera, dog kennels. And, you know, it's a very extensive list. So you are, you know, you're not only taking away the value of our property by not allowing, um, you know, allowing the proper zoning. Uh, you know, that would allow us to actually build units. Uh, you are severely changing the, uh, uh, the conditional and, uh, permitted uses, and I think that's, uh, inappropriate.
Um, your, your time is, is up. Can, can you wrap up?
Yep. Okay, I'm done. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, next, uh, we have Brian Woganbach. Welcome, Brian. You're on mute.
There you go. Sorry, I had to find it. Um, good evening. Thanks for allowing us to speak. I did write a letter, um, and I've spoken before, but I just wanted to speak again and make myself, um, as clear as possible. I'm the firewise representative for our area here, Bolinger Canyon, including the Bluffs, Deep Bolinger Canyon and Valley Hill where I live. And, um, I want to say that I'm deeply concerned about any construction or additional housing building in this area. As I see it as a huge additional risk to public safety in relation to wildfire risk, um, evacuation and traffic flow. Um, Bolinger Canyon Road, as it currently exists, is that quote unquote, non-conforming road, meaning that it does not meet today's standards. So any building that occurs in this one steady area would, would have to be reached by Bolinger Canyon Road, which is just a windy, kind of crazy road. And anybody who's walked on it will, will agree with this, that it's, it's just a tricky, a tricky road as it is right now. And any more cars, any more construction, any more trucks moving all this unstable dirt would be really, really dangerous. So I just want to say that this is the wrong place to add homes. It is already a potentially dangerous situation here. We know that the fire, Maraga Fire, Maraga Rinda, MOFD is concerned about this area. Um, and I just don't think we need to add, um, any, any more potent, potentially dan- dangerous, um, situations. Um, we have a new normal now. I see, you know, the plans that have been made in the past are certainly uh, being changed now, but I think they have to be changed because of this, this new normal. Um, the fire risk is just too extreme these days. Our desire would be to have ten units, uh, one dwelling unit per ten acres, or if anything at all, or a density transfer to a safer part of town. Um, and that's it. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for coming in for speaking.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, next, we have Alexis Maple.
Hi there. Uh, this is Alexis Maple. I'm a resident of the Bluffs. And, uh, I will mimic much of what was just said. I absolutely urge you to vote no on approving any rezoning changes. The Bluffs, as it has been said, is already a high-risk area in terms of access in and out on a good day. Nevertheless, in an emergency situation, be that fire, nine one one, whatever it might be. Uh, what was not shown today was shown yesterday on the call, which was the list of the study area characteristics, which were quite frankly, all negative in terms of the ability to expand this area in any way, including risk of fire, the narrow roadways, traffic, lack of access in and out. Uh, and so the fact that it's being considered at all is disappointing. Uh, I understand it needs to be, and I appreciate all the time and effort that is being taken to assess what is viable. Um, but it is extremely concerning and also potentially impacts our ability to remain a firewise community, which a lot of work was put into, um, achieving. Because it would impact our ability to evacuate in a fire so much. It was pointed out last night that even if just fifty additional homes were built, you're talking about most likely two hundred cars, additional cars accessing the Bluffs neighborhood daily. Nevertheless, Bolinger Canyon and all of the delivery and things like that. Uh, so I again strongly urge you to vote no against any rezoning and certainly not increasing the zoning that's been proposed this evening by anything. And I applaud the owners who are able to and willing to decrease the number of dwellings built on their property. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Alexis. Thanks for, for coming in for commenting. All right, any other public comment? I don't see any more raised hands. Oh, sorry, Susan Captain. Welcome, Susan. You, there we go.
Everyone, uh, thank you so much for taking my call, uh, or, uh, my comments. I did send, um, 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 a pay, um, comments via email. And I believe Steve will call it, uh, Steve was with us working on that, um, initiative for a home base wine making, uh, strategy for the town. Uh, but what I wanted to, uh, make sure that we do not lose what, uh, the Maraga, uh, general plan states, which is promoting and preserving of Maraga's remaining agricultural resources as an important part of the town's heritage and character. And we understand that agriculture has been removed from our fast-track lives to the extent that we, we don't even know what to, to, uh, define it or how to think about it. But this is one of the reasons that Sal and I got into the wine growing and to bring back that heritage, heritage and character back to our, uh, town and city. And I really commend, uh, Ms. Hamid and, uh, and the town, uh, and as well as Barry and, um, the town manager for working with us to preserve what we have worked so long to, uh, bring to, uh, our community. And, um, thank you so much. Just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Susan, for coming to talk to us. Um, I see a raised hand by a nine two five phone number. Is that, is that someone else or is that someone who's already spoken?
I think it's somebody new. Their talking is permitted, so.
Okay, that, there, um, you're on mute. Um, the, the person who's dialing in, you're, you're on mute, so we can't hear you.
I've given them permission to talk and asked to unmute.
Okay, well, let's, let's, uh, let's just put, um, let's bring somebody else in while we figure out what, what's going on there.
The first, the first, uh, after nine two five, the next digits are three, seven, six.
Three, yeah.
If that helps.
All right, Marty, can you let K K Wu in, please?
Yes. Hi.
Hi, welcome. Yes, we can.
Hi, this is, uh, Tim and K K Wu, uh, of, um, San Pablo Court, fifty-one San Pablo Court. I just wanted to echo the same concerns that has already been said about the, the traffic, um, increase and the, uh, safety issues that would, uh, uh, I guess, affect. And I just, everything has already been said. We just want to kind of uh, voice our concerns as well. Uh, fire, pedestrians, increased traffic, you know. You can estimate, um, two hundred car fifty, you know, it's, it's fifty, uh, additional units, two hundred cars, or how many trips? You calculate it any which way you want. Our streets are not capable of handling that kind of, uh, volume. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for, for coming and for, um, participating. Um, okay, next is Sharon Ong.
Hi.
Hi. Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I'm a resident of the Bluffs as well. I'm at eighteen twenty Joseph Drive. Um, I, we have submitted, uh, our concerns via email to you all, uh, since February. Uh, mainly, I'm echoing what my other neighbors in the Bluffs have stated, concerned about safety, traffic, um, fire safety in particular, but also safety for my children. I have three young kids. They are walking up and down Joseph Drive. They, um, would like to be able to walk to the, um, Maraga, the, the trail, the Maraga Rinda Trail or whatever. And, um, I don't, I don't think having traffic is gonna, it's gonna make that very unsafe for them. Um, and I just want to echo what my other neighbors have stated. I think you guys have seen our concerns in writing and, um, I sent them to you again today. So I just, uh, wanted to echo what my neighbors have said. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, um, one last shout out to the, the caller who has a nine two five, three, seven, six number and has a hand up but is on mute. All right, um, ah, there we go. Hello?
Um, yeah, Marty just moved them out of the room. That's why they're, you couldn't see their phone anymore. So now she put them back in the room, so.
Okay, but the caller on, on the three, seven, six number. Your hand is up, you're on mute. We'd love to hear from you, but, um, don't know if you're there. don't know if you're there. Okay, well, um. Marty, we just, just keep them hanging on. I mean, we can always take comment if, if we figure this out a little bit later. I'm sorry. Okay, thanks, Marty. All right, um, close public comments and bring this back for council, uh, feedback to staff on what has been presented to us today. And I know some council members have already expressed some very clear views, so, um, who would like to, who would like to start? Mike.
Okay, I was pausing, so. So, um, well, thank you, Renata. You asked, asked my question about Lot F, and I would just like to give feedback. Yes, please. Talked a Lot F, and I noticed G is between F and H and got my alphabet there. So I do think it's important to reach out and have those conversations, and I'm very flexible in that. For, for me, I, I'm just, um, as Teresa was saying, I, I was very surprised. I thought we were going down a really nice path here and this is gonna be a nice session. And, and then I see three-quarter lots, and even if you made them forty thousand square feet, let's call it an acre, next to five-acre, ten-acre lots, uh, there, there's a consistency issue there. So I, I've got a, I've got a real concern. So my first direction is for staff, um, take a look to see if the plan development process could be modified or excluded in this area, so it's a five-acre minimum, uh, in rural residential. Or my second choice is, if you can't do that, and I understand limitations, there needs to be um, some distance between clustered three-quarter of an acre, one-acre lots and five to ten-acre lots. And I don't know how you would write that up, and I, this may be a little unique. Um, but you know, this is a unique area, so we need to have something. If we use words like, well, it shouldn't be near, or there should be minimal impact to existing, that is so subjective, I, you know, who, who knows what that means. So I, I would ask staff to, to really focus on those two areas because that's one of my real key issues. And then hearing what I just heard and I, on SB nine, I was hoping there would be some other answer, but you know, if, if you have those lot splits at fifty percent of the fifty units, that's a hundred and seventy-five units instead of fifty. And if residential units, and if you have lots splits, splits at twenty-five percent, that's a hundred and thirteen units. Now do some math on how many cars that could be. Up to five hundred. I, I mean, I, I'm really concerned, so, and we can't do anything about SB nine, okay? I, I get that, but I think in the staff report, there should be some dialogue about uh, dealing with some very substantial impacts, more than I thought coming into the meeting tonight on, uh, traffic and fire. Uh, I think we need to address that versus if we just approve this, you know, as a resident, I'd say, well, you haven't addressed some of the important impacts to me. And I know we can say that could wait till later, but, you know, I think we need to do more. So, um, good job, staff. I mean, like, you've been doing so good on this whole process. Asha, Barry, Cynthia, uh, um, Karen, yeah, Karen. So really, I, I think you're doing great. Let's move it along. But this is an important juncture. And, and I think it's good to take, you know, some extra time and come, and we might even need another session on this, but I'm really uncomfortable now approving this the way it is, just where I am. So I need to see some modifications. And what makes me feel good is that we've got creative people here that I'm sure can help us get there. Let's, let's come up with the win-win so that we can have this, this new zoning category. And we can also be consistent with the general plan because to me, um, I have great concerns. And if you've walked a lot, um, there, there's gonna be, there's gonna be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Cynthia.
I think that maybe we could, uh, should clarify SB nine because SB nine doesn't apply to a development application. It applies after, it applies just to a single parcel. So I don't know, Karen or Asha, if you want to kind of take that and, and explain that in more depth.
Um, y- yeah, so just to clarify that if a development application comes in, those lot splits wouldn't be part of that development application, um, when it, for, when it first comes in. Um, that would only apply once the individual lots are created and, you know, to subsequent homeowners. So just to make that, make that clarification.
Right, and that was my question. We have an application. Let's say the application's approved. Now we have thirty-seven lots. People now move in and they want to split the lot and we get six units. So, yeah, that's exactly what I was asking and that's what I heard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Teresa.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I've got a question, I guess. So I didn't ask questions really last time when I was supposed to, but I guess I've got one now, so, so sorry.
Is tonight backwards night, Teresa?
I think it is for me anyway. I am so sorry. But, you know, thinking about the process and the, the challenges that Mike and I both have addressed, I was wondering if, if we went back to the non-Moso housing and have had, um, housing permitted instead of conditional. If that would, if that would change this scenario and make it so that we would be able to have the five, ten, or twenty, but also we could make it, make sure that it's more reflective of the neighborhood. Is, would that work that way, Ashan? Can you tell me? Or Barry? Because that's something that we did not discuss, um, when we came up with the RR. You know, we didn't talk about permitted housing for non-Moso open space.
I think it'd be problematic because you have the option, um, you use that use permit process to determine if it's five acres, ten acres, or twenty acres. So if you don't have a use permit, then you need to pick one of those five, ten, or twenty. I don't think you can leave that as a, uh, a subjective choice if it's a permitted use. Uh, at least that would be my take on it.
As, so, kind of raising that a little bit, since we're making up the RR, we would just be making up the other one. I mean, so that would, this clearly has challenges. And so would that one. So would it be, which would be a challenge that would reflect the neighborhood more?
Right, right.
Barry.
I think, uh, yeah, I know, I'm thinking we will have to meet, uh, we'll have to take that feedback and, and, uh, discuss it uh, internally because I'm not sure how we would formulate that at this point. I mean, what we're proposing is very similar to the non-Moso open space five acre, with a five-acre, uh, and you know, lot, lot size, uh, with the exception that residential uses are permitted use. Essentially, everything else is similar to the non-Moso open space.
Yeah, I just think it might give us more flexibility. So I don't know if it's too late to be thinking about that, but I, I mean, that's something we didn't talk about before and we're clearly having some challenges with what we're talking about now. So I'm just throwing that out there. And maybe there's agreement, maybe there's not, but I think, I think it would be good to look at it.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Isn't it true that the PD clustering process also applies to Moso open space and non-Moso open space?
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct. And if, if, and, and, and what we're doing is we've created like a hierarchy here in order to filter out, um, and in order to apply filters. So here, what we're doing with the rural residential is we're actually applying clarity of review, clarity of process. So anything that is one dwelling unit per five acre is permitted as long as they're meeting the development standards. Now, if we have a development that comes in, it would be subject to studies. It would have to go through the subdivision map act. Um, and it would also have to, um, you know, it may also have to go through a PD process, which is all public hearings and meetings, so with clustering. So it's, you know, and looking at, yeah.
And how would that be different than going with the open space, um, permitted housing? I mean, you'd still have to do all of those same things. You just have a different deck of cards. You'd have a broader deck of cards. Is that right?
I would like to look at that a little bit more, uh, council member. Uh, I'm trying right now.
Yeah, so I'll answer another question. I'll just say that if, uh, if the town were to add residential permitted uses to non-Moso, that would affect all non-Moso spaces in, in the town.
Teresa, are you, are your questions answered?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Steve?
So the, the first thing I wanted to do is answer Mike's question from about three hours ago, if not four. And, and that is, you know, Mike, I, I think you were asking, you know, what's the maximum? You know, if you're permitted for, let's say, thirty-seven, does that mean you get thirty-seven? And the answer to that's no. When you go through the planning process, you take into account streams, uh, excessively steep hillsides, um, uh, other geologic, uh, uh, challenges. And so sometimes if you're theoretically thirty-seven, you're, you may end up with thirty or, 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 or something else when you really get into details. And, and that's one of the challenges we have here tonight is that people are trying to address these things at a detail level. Yet we're, we're, we're too early for that. And, and that includes emergency egress and fire mitigation and even clustering. And and, and, you know, a thing to keep in mind is that before anything gets built, it's gotta be approved by one of the fire departments, either MOFD or, or Cal Fire. And, and those requirements are changing significantly. And, and over the years that I've been in this business, I've, I've certainly gone out into the Ballinger Canyon area to visit potentials sites, not many because there aren't many out there, but, you know, up a hill and, and, you know, uh, uh, driveways wide enough for the, for the fire apparatus to get up and turn around and come back down, things like that. So it, you, you know, there is no, you know, it's not gonna get built unless fire signs off on it. And they're gonna be a heck of a lot more, uh, uh, prescriptive now than they were twenty years ago. And you know, with some of these new laws, when you're in a very high fire danger area, some of those new housing laws aren't, aren't gonna be applicable anymore. You know, we're still, still waiting for, uh, Cal Fire to, to designate the, the risk factors for some of these areas, but it, it's, it's known that some of these laws with regard to housing, guaranteed housing, will be exempted in those areas because of fire risk. And likewise, traffic, egress, PD has got to sign off that it can be handled. I agree, it'd be a real challenge out there, especially for the number of houses we're talking about, but that's not part of our scope at this moment. And I, and I, I, so I'm told, so I understand. And if, if that's wrong, please, please educate me. So, you know, some of these risks, it's too early to get, to make decisions based upon them, uh, is, sometimes, and I've certainly been seeing projects that go on forever and never get built because the risks cannot be, uh, addressed. And likewise, with regard to clustering, that has to be handled like it's an option. And there are certain locations where it's the right thing to do, and there are other locations where it's not the right thing to do. And for example, Paulus, Colorado, I'd much rather have those four hundred and fifty acres split between a hundred and fifty acres of one hundred and twenty-three homes, theoretically one acre zoning, but really it's half acre zoning because of the clustering, and then three hundred acres of truly open space. And the same applies to, to Bella Vista. If, if we didn't use clustering in Bella Vista, they would probably, you know, out there in Coyote Gulch where we like to go hiking, there'd be houses out there. So, you, you know, it's, it's that trade-off. And, and, um, you know, we have had this area as a study area for, forever. And we're, we're tasked with trying to get a zone. And I think we have to do that for a number of reasons. And, and I, I think, uh, what we decided upon in February is the right compromise. It, it, it isn't dense and it isn't, uh, wide open space. And even if they go to clustering, where that clustering will end up is in that semi-flat area, and it will not be visible from the Sealy Corridor, uh, that being St. Mayor's Road, because that's, that's a sort of a recessed area. So I'm, I'm not concerned about that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sona.
Thank you. So while, while we're getting closer to completing our goals set out in the advanced planning initiative, which was to decide upon a residential designation for this parcel, uh, we're still far away from any of the proposed development or plan development. So, um, my statements actually are very similar to what the vice marriage has said. And that I think that many of the comments brought up will be more applicable to dig into at that later stage. So with the caveat that I think it's still premature, I, I'm open to exploring flexibility and distance between, uh, clusters. I, I believe that was Mike's second point, um, just to track. I, I, I think it's challenging to see what that would look like in writing, but, um, I'm, I'm open to seeing it. But I, I, I do think we spent a significant amount of time talking about this and, um, would like to, to complete our goal of, um, uh, coming out of our significant discussion and a lot of thought that went into that. And then lastly, on the point about agriculture, the, the definition, I was glad to see that the change was made based on public comment. That's exactly the type of iterative, iterative process that we are, should be all striving for. And, um, in our role as council members is to, you know, ensure that we're, we're iterating upon that, those needs brought forward to us. And then further refining it to track to the county definition makes sense. Um, I don't think it's too vague, and I think because objectionable is put in the context of, you know, you know, odor, smoke, dust, fumes, I, I, I'm fine with the definition as it is. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Sona. Um, all right, I haven't forgotten anyone. Can I go now? Yeah, got it. Just checking. Steve, I didn't forget you this time. All right, let me, I, I, I want to echo the comments made by, uh, by, by Sona and by Steve. I mean, I, I think in terms of the, the, the zoning district, um, we had a very thorough, considered, and I believe, uh, very productive, uh, discussion about this with myriad factors going into it. And I agree uh, that that was the, the, the best call for this property under the circumstances. And I, I do not believe that it should be revisited. Um, I do agree that there have been a number of concerns that have been raised that we need to address. And I want to thank the public for the extensive input. Um, but I think as Sona alluded to, you know, this is a marathon, not a sprint. And, um, some of these items are, are teed up for later on in the process and will be addressed, and we can't possibly do everything right now at a level of detail. Rather, what we are focused on is making sure that the changes to the general plan and the changes to the municipal code that will effectuate the zoning that we decided on already are consistent with the look and feel and the character of this property and with the general plan. And so the, to the extent Barry, Asha, and Cynthia, you know, there, there can be reinforcement of those principles as appropriate, um, the general plan principles, then then I, I encourage that. But again, um, clustering and all of these things are still subject to our many other, uh, you know, development standards and requirements, um, and, and those do not fall away simply because clustering is an option. I think the consistency in terms of the, um, the, um, the, the lot size, I, I think there should be consistency between the rural residential and non-Moso, Moso open space. I think it's really important that we incorporate what already exists and not try to create new things out of whole cloth that apply only to this, to this part of, of, of town. Um, so I, I would be in favor of that. Um, I agree with Sona on the definition of agriculture, and I also. Um, I agree with Sona on the definition of agriculture. And I also want to thank staff and the property owners who are already engaged in agricultural activities for working together to come up with a solution, because the last thing we want to do is to prohibit something that you're already doing. Uh, and we want to make sure that we do respect the heritage and the tradition of agricultural use in this town and, and, and celebrate that and, and respect it. Um, so, um, those are, are my comments. Again, thank you to, uh, to staff and Barry. Once again, you have, uh, given us just the tip of the iceberg. You know, there's a lot of work underneath it um, that, uh, has gone into it. Thanks for continuing to engage the community and get input. And, um, I just want to make sure that we have provided sufficient direction and clarity.
Yes. Uh, there is sufficient clarity. Um, my understanding from what I'm reading, and I just want to summarize it, uh, Mayor, is that, uh, to move forward with one dwelling unit per five acres with a new rural residential district. Uh, we do want to look a little bit closer at some of the details such as clustering, or we want to look at maybe some buffering. I think that's, um, that would be the proper reflection of what Councilmember McClure said. Um, and we can look at some other provisions as well.
And we'll also be following up, um, on the one dwelling unit per acre. We'll, we will evaluate that to determine whether it makes sense. Um, but-
The, the third property owner who we just heard from.
Yes, and just, you know, the, the other two, that they were larger parcels, there were agricultural uses, they, they definitely made sense. But we'll have to evaluate that one. Um, and then we just want to be clear that the next step is going to be the environmental review.
Yes.
So, um, so we're, we'll come back with language following the whole EIR process. And at that point in time, there'll be public hearings, et cetera, and you will adopt it then.
Okay.
But we're taking this in bite-sized pieces. So you'll also get in, in the coming months, the whole kind of inclusionary parking and transfer of development rights, some of that draft language, so that when you get the whole package, uh, it won't seem overwhelming.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, team. Um, I think probably I'm looking at Mike, he's gonna raise his hand and ask for a break. Am I, am I right?
Right.
Well, I need one too. I need one too. Um, okay, so let it, it's eight forty-three. Let's come back in five minutes. Thank you. All right, we are back on the record. Um, we are now on Agenda Item Ten B, which is consider a resolution adopting an initial study mitigated negative declaration for the St. Mary's roundabouts and, and, um, a couple of other things. Um, I, I just want to, uh, be clear on, on what this is not tonight. This, we are not being asked to make a go-no-go decision on the actual construction of roundabouts at these two locations, but rather uh, we're being asked to take certain steps that are necessary to close out the preliminary engineering and environmental phase of the project. And we're being asked by staff whether, uh, we should, would like to set aside fifty thousand dollars in the upcoming fiscal year to allow staff to pursue grant funding for, um, future work on the project. So we'll do this, uh, uh, the way we do, um, uh, everything, which is staff report, questions from council members, public comments. Then we'll bring it back to council for discussion and for, um, for action. And with that, uh, Sean, are you up?
I'm actually gonna say something really briefly, and that is, um, I received, uh, quite a few questions, um, from, uh, regarding the staff report. And it became clear to me that the process that occurred in twenty eighteen whereby multiple different scenarios and options were researched and information was put forward on the safety and the cost and the benefits, um, that, that information hadn't been shared with the council. So, or with this particular council, and maybe, uh, the community might have forgotten some of it. So I did ask Sean to put some slides in his PowerPoint and spend about five minutes going over that, so you understand kind of the basis upon what this work, uh, how this project came to be. So sorry if it's a little bit longer, but I thought that was necessary. With that, Sean, go ahead.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Thank you. So, um, tonight I also have, uh, Mark Summers from our engineering group here, and also John Pulliam and Alex Joel there from Kimberly Homes, who have been working on the contract for the uh, conceptual design of, uh, a double roundabout on St. Mary's Road at Bolton Canyon and also Reed Boulevard. So as Cynthia mentioned, I will go over kind of a little brief history, so you know where we've come from, and then we'll get into kind of the meat of what we're asking the council to consider is the environmental analysis, and if, if so, choose to approve that, so we can close out this phase of the project. So I'll share my screen here for the presentation. Give me a moment to get it set up. Just want to make sure that you're seeing a full screen of the presentation. That is that correct?
Yes.
I can't see you at the moment. Go back here. Okay. Um, just the way my screen is set up. And I might look to the side because that's where my presentation is. But as we go through here, uh, there, the, on the first slide here shows you a perspective from a different, couple of different directions of the uh, intersection of Reed Boulevard and, um, St. Mary's. You can kind of see to up to the right, there's a home up there on the blocks. And, um, oh, uh, drops down into kind of a, a depressed area as it goes down towards Bolton Canyon. So there's a number of, uh, site distance constraints, other issues out there, geometry issues that were a concern. And, uh, and I'll get into that as we go along here. So tonight's, uh, request of the council was to consider adopting the mitigated negative tech according to the California Environmental um, Quality Act, CEQA, and appropriate thirty-five, uh, thirty-seven thousand dollars from Fund Seven Nine Nine, um, the LFFA funding. Now, this isn't new funding for the project. It's, it's been in the account that we haven't used for the project, but we're looking, going forward with the new CIP budgeting. We're asking if, if you support, uh, looking at additional studies for the project or potential grant funding. And we have to have funding and a desire from the council to move forward on that. So we want to weigh in from the council on, on the direction, so staff knows what priorities are, of course. And then click, hopefully close out this preliminary engineering environmental analysis phase of project. Uh, the majority of the funding and courses coming from a CCTA grant. Overview, bird's eye view. Uh, we have two intersections very close together on St. Mary's Road, Reed Boulevard in Bollinger. As I mentioned, some of the physical constraints that make it a precarious inner, inner double intersection. There's a little, another area, a little more close up. Um, there, and, uh, shows you, you know, it's a zigzag X as turned through this area. Many people, of course, have already driven this and understand that. So I want to provide you some brief histories, so you know where we've come from and how we got here. And, and, and I do have some dates on, on here, but this project is even older than what's shown on the screen there. Um, back in two thousand six, two thousand six, two thousand seven, um, residents from the bluff area had approached the town with their safety concerns of these intersection and, and also in the neighboring area. It had expressed concerns about the, the intersection and the safety there. And it was studied by the Traffic Safety Committee at that time, and eventually went to the the town council who approved, uh, initial study funding for the project. And it progressed to the point where a, uh, contract was put out, uh, to do a, a very comprehensive study uh, by Fears and Pierce in two thousand nine. And they can't look at a number of different, uh, scenarios. And, and all these different studies have looked at every possible different scenario. So why we may at this point be only looking at a one or two in particular, there's been studied every possible different combination of intersection improvements here. And so I, I don't want that to go, be a miss here, that, um, this has been studied in quite detail, and these are the ones that we'll show you at the end, are the ones that have came out with the best that cost ratio benefit. So kind of moving on again, in two thousand and fifteen, um, we studied the intersection again. And they came up with a recommendation of two full-size roundabouts out of all the different, uh, iterations, permutations that they studied. With a cost of about seven, uh, seven million dollars back in two thousand and fifteen. The goal in two thousand and sixteen was from the town council was to complete a, uh, engineering design of, uh, comes, a conceptual addition, design with funding for that, and see if we can secure additional funding for possible, uh, construction. If, uh, if we actually went through a design process, which we are trying to finish today. So you can see in the bottom hand, right-hand corner is, or left-hand corner is the recommended, uh, configuration that was discussed even back in two thousand and sixteen and fifteen. So some of the, uh, uh, improvements to address issues, there's insufficient stopping distance, site distance and visibility issues, insufficient capacity for accommodating future growth, I think, uh, the previous item, uh, land development item, uh, the people to express concerns about that capacity handle traffic. And it's identified in the walk-by plan as one of the intersections or two intersections for improvements. Briefly, I want to talk about how, how we've analyzed all these multiple different permutations of what could be installed out there. We've used the Caltrans intersect, intersection control evaluation, or ICE. It evaluates, uh, intersections based on a number of different, uh, elements which are given point system. And this is through Caltrans, it's nationally recognized, it's isn't, is it a point system that the town developed or the consultant developed? This is, uh, the established method for evaluating, um, intersections on a number of different parameters, safety, delay to, um, motorist, emissions reductions, operations and maintenance, and also, of course, the initial capital cost to construct, um, they, uh, whatever the improvement is at that intersection. So roundabouts have been around for a long time. I think this one is like a nine-legged roundabout in Berkeley. It's been there, I think, since, uh, nineteen oh seven, if, if I remember correctly. Um, so quite a, you know, a hundred years in Berkeley. It's not, it's not a new thing. And, uh, it doesn't have to be that complicated. But, uh, you know, roundabouts have been around for a long time, of course. So their existing, uh, configuration is, is a, a, a one-way stop at, uh, Reed Boulevard and St. Mary's, with St. Mary's having, um, free flow traffic. And the same, the same goes for Bollinger Canyon where there is a stop sign. So the, the concept was to put a roundabout at St. Mary's and Reed Boulevard. We'll study the detail with all the other possible permutations. That was concept two. And then, then as we honed in on the design and options, we started looking at many roundabouts to reduce the cost. And the, and the other top performing concept, and when you rate these on, on a cost ratio benefit, the next highest would be the traffic signal, but it, um, but it, it, why is a possible uh, solution, the, the cost, of course, and the bit cost ratio benefit did not pan out versus the roundabouts as it was now, uh, analyzed many times over. So talking about the cost ratio benefit, uh, the existing, uh, it's basic, uh, the, against the existing, the signal and the roundabout were the two most optimum, um, uh, uh, signal type or, or roundabout type solutions were the most optimal for maximizing the sections in the signal, unfortunately was below one point O. That's usually no-go, uh, uh, ratio. And the roundabout, of course, was above one point O. Some important features of roundabouts are, uh, roundabouts reduce the number of conflict areas in the intersection, because they separate conflict areas. And also it provides a single decision point for drivers, you not having to look from, from so many angles at different possible conflicts, whether it's for pedestrians or other motorists. As you come to an intersection, if it's a four-legged intersection, you have to look in multiple directions where cars have possibly come from. A roundabout separates those conflict areas or decision areas and allows you to deal at, deal with them more on a one-on-one basis as you move through the roundabout. They also reduce the impact or stability from a crash as they are typically a sight-swiping motion because cars, uh, vehicles are not traveling straight on or on broadside in, in the motion as they enter and exit the, uh, so here's a, here's a diagram to kind of give you an idea what I'm talking about. You know, at a four-way intersection to, uh, two vehicles on the left approaching at ninety-degree angles, you get a severe impact angle. Or, or in the middle, you're making a left-hand turn. Again, it's the same kind of duplication of, uh, of a, a motion. These are more frontal or, uh, cross-frontal impacts, more energy is, is driven into the, into the impact because of the angles and the direction of the vehicles. Whereas on the right, a, uh, roundabout has a sight-swiping, uh, cars are traveling in similar directions, which means there's less opposing force. And so typically the accidents are less severe. Um, you know, in previous presentations, we went through all the different components of each of the different aspects, whether it's emissions, safety, you know, cost, maintenance, we went through all of these. And so I do want to go through all that again, because I'm just trying to give you an overview of where we were at. But, uh, when we summed up all those different elements over time, why the roundabout might be more expensive to install initially, the overall benefits in the choose over time, or, or had a better cost ratio benefit, uh, payback. So the concept as, as, uh, it is currently, and it was approved in, by previous councils, was a double roundabout, larger roundabout being at Reed Boulevard and St. Mary's, and then a smaller roundabout being at Bolton Canyon in St. Mary's. And from that, um, we, we took this design to, uh, the environmental agencies. We had a joint meeting with, uh, a number of different, uh, agencies to get their input, uh, get their requirements for the project from a CEQA standpoint. And those included Fish and Game, uh, Army Corps, Department of Fish and, uh, Water, Fish and Wildlife, Regional Water Project Board and others participating, participate in a joint meeting uh, inter-agency meeting back in two thousand and twenty-one. Okay, some of the takeaways from the agency meeting was, you know, the regulatory permits for the wetland areas, this does have a creek that flows underneath the roadway uh, in mitigation, possible mitigation for whiplash snakes, red, uh, legged frogs. Um, it would be, have to be addressed in the construction. Uh, there is ways to either mitigate onsite, or there is a possible purchasing credits through a conservation bank, which the town has used for other projects also. And we'll also need to incorporate additional stormwater treatment management techniques as the Regional Water Project Board has, uh, increased the requirements for treating water runoff from road projects. And you'll be seeing more and more treatment in the capital improvement projects as these requirements have to be implemented with the new uh, regional permit that has recently passed. So, uh, they CEQA mitigated negative debt, just looks at the environmental impacts and effects and doesn't look at the merits of the particular project, it's just looking at the environmental impacts. And so today we're And so today we're going to be asking you if you consider the. Analysis that for the initial study draft mitigated new deck that which was prepared by community horn. In accordance with CCA. That it is in compliance with CCA that we could file it. As a notice that the project is has it has minimal impacts or medic or impacts, it could be mitigated through measures. To make it an approved project to move forward with. And so we've we've filed a notice of intent to adopt this with the state, we've sent out notices. And you know, all these different areas, I'm not going to read them all, but every area environmental. Impacts have been analyzed and documented. There is a copy or at least a link to the document, which you can see is quite extensive, over seven hundred pages of analysis. Okay, as I mentioned, no significant project impacts that could not be mitigated through measures for the project. And and the project would be monitored to make sure these mitigation measures will be intact through the construction. And now and now steps after the project has been constructed for a period of time. Okay, just some of the kind of the highlights and things that were considered that'll have. Things that will have to mitigate or make sure we monitor. You know, air quality, of course, making sure the equipment is being used is is. Is using the standards, doesn't exceed air quality standards, biological resources. You know, we have a creek there, we'll be monitoring the process, making sure we're not doing damages there. Cultural resources, we've reached out to a number of groups to make sure that there is no cultural resources that. Potentially could be buried in the area and in on and on as far as the different impacts that we would mitigate in there all detailed in the report. So they sequel mitigated negative deck decoration was sent out to. All property owners and occupants within six hundred feet of the project. We posted notices onsite and within the project site. We also posted the draft initial study mitigating the deck on the town's website. Comments, the closing period for comments was January twenty fourth of twenty twenty two. And in accordance with that, we had a number of. Comments or consultations mainly with the tribal chair of the Confederate Village of Listane Tribe. Which was held via Zoom for the two just the concerns that they may have. We did not receive any other negative or environmental. We did receive one comment from the East Bay Municipal Utility District about their services. That crossed underneath the project site. And it was an environmental concern or question, but it was more about if if it ever goes to construction, these are the things that we'd like you to adhere to be aware of. So tonight, again, our recommendation is to adopt the initial study, maybe mitigated negative deck. Decoration for St Mary's Rowan Belts at Ring Boulevard, all two canyon project CIP fourteen six oh seven in accordance with CCA. And and approved thirty seven thousand dollars from Fund seven nine nine. It's a law member and fee and finance authority. This is money that's already been set aside for the project, but we're asking we could appropriate or allocate that for the following year to be used for any kind of study. Work with the project. And then then we would be asked for at the closeout if 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 the mitigate deck was approved. We'd be closing out this preliminary engineering and environmental analysis phase. And giving notice to CCTA that we've completed the work.
And then let me add, we're also asking for direction because we did have a hundred and forty thousand. For dollars from Fund seven nine nine LFA. Allocated to this project and we came in under budget. So there's an additional seventy thousand dollars and the question to the council is, would you like us to budget? For a discussion of kind of phase two and if we should use fifty thousand dollars of that. To pursue grant funding of the roundabouts.
So again, I do have our consultants on on the line here with us that could answer any technical questions about the project itself. Or the environmental analysis if as you choose. And so I'm going to stop sharing and turn it back over to the council.
All right. Thank you, Sean, very much. Are there any council member questions? Oh, Steve, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. First one is in the cost estimate. And and you know, I presume it's part of the scope of tonight. It we can you help me understand the five hundred thousand dollars of storm treatment? That's included. What what physically is is that? And I, you know, I I recognize you said, you know, we're we're being required to do more stormwater treatment. I wonder if we're going to, are we going to be killing all future projects by that requirement? That's a lot of money.
Well, well, first let me turn it over to John Paulian. He's with Kimberly Horn, he's the lead project manager for this project with Kimberly Horn, you can answer that. And it came out of the requirements from the regional water quality board, which. Which was done, you know, the last couple of years, which don't account for the new. New permit that is being just issued. And so the town will be required to treat additional amounts of acreage in the next three years. With ours, you know, our capital approval projects, so seeing more types of, you know, bio swells. Curve cuts where you collect the water and you and you cycle through landscaping or other means. It's going to appear more than norm than it has in the past. But John can tell you the details about this particular treatment as they have designed it.
Sure. Hello. So the point we're at in the design is we've we've created these thirty five percent plans, which is, you know, the end of the preliminary engineering phase. And as part of this work, as we discussed, we've been looking at what do we need to do to comply with the regional quality control boards. Requirements around stormwater treatment. Those treatment improvements have not necessarily been completely designed at this point. What we've done is determine how much space we would need within the project and applied a typical factor that we use at this stage in the engineering process. And then as this project would move through into final design, that would be, you know, further designed to. Design those types of things which Sean just mentioned, we would we would have bio swales, features that would detain water, allow it to infiltrate. Allow it to be treated and cleaned before it's discharged into a surface creek.
So we're potentially talking about sand filters, wiers, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, what we what we do, a lot of our bio retention swales, which are a really lightweight earth fill material that we can plant. That water will infiltrate down into the ground through, we can still plant materials in it. At the end of this structure, yeah, we sometimes will have a weir or something else, which will allow large events to still discharge. Into the into the normal body of water.
Yeah, okay, okay. Hard for me to imagine a half a million dollars for such, but that's fine. The the other question, maybe it's more for Sean. So do we have a compelling reason for this project? Relative to some of our other priorities in town, for example, you know, sidewalk. On Corliss. At. At the elementary school there, LP. You know, just for example, you know, is this, do we have a compelling reason that this thing needs to move forward?
But it depends on what you need mean by need forward. I think it's it's a. Desired project possibly for an improvement into the future and to be able to position yourself for the future. As you can see, this is almost, you know, it's almost twenty years almost in the kind of end thought and making here. And it takes some time to develop and get the funding for these. And so if you want to position it, so. You can look for funding when it becomes available and and get the necessary funds. For a later date, you have to be able to, you know, progress it at at a rate that you desire. As relative our immediate needs, I know, I don't think it's our top of the list. Desired project from a safety standpoint, we have other ones that, of course, the council is looking at and considering. But again, we're we're not asking to advance it to the to a can design phase right now, we're just looking at how we can strategize. And get additional funding for into the future. But if you have, if you do not fund anything on this project, then accordingly, the staff will not work on it. At a zero level. And if those opportunities come by, they will just pass by. And we won't be able to, you know, start cleaning, you know, funding and coupling it together. So. Yes, it's not going to be the highest priority, but if you desire, we could have some at level effort, if something comes along. We would, we would try to position it and apply for grants. And in all that would be done through the, you know, within connection with the council, giving us direction. Say this is a project that we could potentially go after or grant, and then we come back to you and see where we're at with it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, again, we haven't, this council, last council, three and a half years, we haven't seen anything. So pardon me for some basics. So this is a thirty five percent design phase and my understanding for the last three and a half years, we we kept seeing the bills that are part of the grant. But if we didn't complete this, we would need to repay the grant. Is is that correct?
We, yeah, the the intent is you you complete the work that you have. Signed on, you signed an agreement with CCTA to complete the work. And in adopting the, you know, the negative deck is the completion of that work. We do have a cost savings that we have not expended all the funds. If you desire, we set aside some of those funds to just be able to look at. You know, if a potential comes, we'd be able to put together the applications to apply for grants. Which of course don't need to be built today or tomorrow, it's something into the future.
Okay. And then just so I understand the cost, so in the report, I see measure J for forty one thousand. LFA for seventy thousand, so that's a hundred and eleven thousand. Since this, I'm going, I guess I'm going back to November of sixteen when we launched the project. Any other direct costs that the town paid that you're aware of? I know you weren't here, but. Or is are those the direct costs over the five and a half year period?
These are the costs over the five and a half year period. And really only the measured J costs is funding that could have gone to another project, so that initial forty one thousand dollars before the project. Really started and we received grant funds, the rest has all been designated for this project because the LFA. Only can go to a handful of projects that are included in the.
Right, but 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 it's a cost, I mean, the the cost is a hundred and eleven thousand, the direct cost. Yes, stated in the report. Okay, great. Then the other thing is five and a half years, you know, and we're always sensitive to staff time. And and I go, you weren't here, Sean, but maybe for the town manager in this, I know predates you, but. Any idea how much staff time we've spent over five and a half years? I mean. Is it hundreds of hours? Is it a thousand? Any any idea? I'm just trying to get the magnitude because. Sometimes we do this and we say, oh, it's it's grant money, it's free money, but then there's the staff. So I want to get a sense of how much time did we spend?
Sean, is this a project where we charge staff time?
Yeah, there there is staff time in 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 this particular project, I can't speak to the other two studies and. How it was billed and how was how much time was spent, but. Just looking through the volume, amount of material that was generated, it's been a significant effort that the towns put into this many years in the making.
So so let me just distinguish that we do have capital improvement. Projects and in many of the projects or some of the projects. We put administrative costs and then the engineering and the planning staff charged their hours against the project. So you know the total cost of the project and I believe that that has occurred for this project. And then some of the projects, we actually don't have enough funding for staff time. So that's just charged through the department.
Okay, and and we don't know how much that would be over five and a half years.
Well, it's in the CIP budget. I have to look at the most.
We'd have to look, okay, all right. Because I'm trying to get the five and a half year view. Okay. And then just to confirm, we just finished. I believe that the CIP plan process and this project is not authorized or not funded. And yet we we have, you know, twenty other good safety transportation projects, but this one is not funded or authorized, right? Correct?
So the to want to answer that question, no, it's it's not funded in to move to another phase. We were asking if you'd like us to have some money set aside to do any, you know, preliminary. Looking for grants and then we could come back to you and say, okay, this is something you want to pursue. Looking at the staff report, it does show the expenditures, we we have thirty two thousand dollars for town staff time, that's administration town. Staff time, there's some another feasibility analysis, which was done outside by a consultant, and we have Kimmely Horn's cost. Five hundred and five thousand dollars.
Okay, and and that, how much of that, if any, has been reimbursed?
We've been reimbursed the complete amount from CCA.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. And then in terms of options that we have. Since the council really, other than the five minute slide presentation, we haven't seen the data that says there's a safety problem. And we really haven't gotten into the options. You know, there was a little bit about a signal stop sign, whatever. So if if and we've got all these other CIP projects. So if the town council said, hey, we're booked this year, we don't have information to. Approve grant funding for roundabouts because we don't, we don't know that there's a problem and we don't know that roundabouts are the right problem. Could we address this next year? Is that a possibility?
Do you want me to answer that? Or is that, you said, you're answering that?
I mean, I I think that we could, we, I mean, we do have the seventy thousand in LFA funding. So we would probably want to allocate it for next year and then just postpone it. As opposed to kind of give back the funding and then have to ask for it again. Is that what you recommend, Sean?
We have the, we were asking the for the fifty thousand, so if if you wanted to come to, if you wanted the town and the. And our consultant to come to you with a presentation, giving more details, they can do that because we have funding for it. If you want us to investigate grants, we can be able to do that, but without any funding, we won't be able to do anything. If you want to for us to shell the project, it's, you know, it's thirty percent shell ready. And evaluate it next year, then and as part of the normal CIP evaluations, that's what we do. So we're looking at your direction for priorities.
Okay, very good.
If we don't put the the money from LFA towards kind of the next step. Do we have to give that money back? And then we'd have to apply for it again?
As we have, we've been reimbursed completely from CCA, they they paid all the. The grant funding for the project, the LFA money is money that we manage for this project as as a. One of the three agencies in the longer end area. So we've been, we've obtained the money and we manage that money. So that money would go back into our LFA account. And that's what we were proposing with the savings for the project, there would be, you know, out of the hundred and forty. We were of the savings for this project, we were proposing to put the majority back into an LFA account.
Right, so we shelved the project for now, the money goes back into LFA, still there and available. Next year, we pick it up and we just, we get more detail, more information, we decide what the next steps are, that's an option.
That is an option, but we need somebody to have our consultant to come back to give you those details that you would want.
Okay, thank you.
Teresa. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was wondering if that LFA, LFA money, thank you. Can that go to other projects as well? Or does it have to stick to this project?
The LFA money is basically your. Development transportation impact fees. And so it's intended to go to projects that would help the town in a. In a on a regional and local level, address traffic impacts. So yes. You can apply it to other projects that qualify under that that those definition criteria, yes.
Okay, so could Okay, so could that qualify for the walking to schools, the Corliss project?
No, it's for La Marinda kind of joint project, so the corridors, think of the La Marinda Action Plan, some of the projects that are defined in that.
Okay, okay, thank you, that answers my question, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, um, we'll close the question, open it up for public comments. Um, do we have any, anybody attending who'd like to make a comment on this agenda item? And then I have one, don't let me forget to read one into the record. Okay, Carl. You're on mute, Carl.
Thank you, Mary Sauce, I couldn't see that it was on mute.
Hi, how you doing?
Doing well, thank you. I don't know quite where to start with this one. This is, this intersection, this pair of intersections has been worked on by the town. I assume that means by our staff for a long time, many hours. The most obvious solution is to come straight across. From Reem, align Bolinger with Reem, align Saint Mary's with itself at Reem. Coming from the bluffs, so that the road is straight and at elevation. And you're no longer trying to see cars approaching down in a gully. Last night in council meeting, or excuse me, commission meeting. I was told that wasn't possible because of all the property owners, actually, all the property owners are as impacted by. A single roundabout and four-way intersection as they are by two roundabouts, same property owners. Same impacts, same impacts with fish and game. I recommended you as a council accept the. The E I R tonight because that's not the relevant point, the relevant point is staff has been working on a staff fantasy. And not on the most obvious solution set. And that really should be the direction from council, is to fix that. The Arlington and Berkeley is a beautiful circus circle. Nine streets coming in, not a single one of them receiving a bypass. And if you were to look at circuses or circles all around the world that uses them. You would find remarkably few examples of three-way intersections on a circus. They don't exist. It's a silly idea. When Lafayette put one in an Olympic circle. It, it was a silly idea there and made worse by putting bypass lanes, it create a. An unknowable right-of-way situation. Um, it's. Circuses have a long history, as, as Director Knapp pointed out. And there is a way to build them, and there are ways not to build them. And I agree, the stoplight would be onerous, two stoplights in a row would be a burden. One circus would work well, two is silly. And there is no reason, if you can acquire the property for one circus on Saint Mary's land. At that nub where they're not supposed to be parking. You can acquire it for a bigger circus and bring the road across. It would make everything far easier for everybody and resolve many of the safety concerns raised. Around developing Bolinger Valley on Bolinger Canyon. Many of those current concerns would be resolved, anyway, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you, all right, next up, we have Mark and Danielle.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I've, I've actually been a proponent, we've been a proponent of the roundabouts for several years. I've spoken before and thank you for your attention. Our observations, living in the bluff site, we live at fifty-seven San Pablo Court, and our observations are as follows. First of all, people speed through the S curve. I think it's within, technically, it's probably within the speed limits of thirty-five miles an hour. However, there is a suggested speed panel of twenty miles an hour. And what happens when you're sitting on Bolinger Canyon and you're trying to make a left-hand turn. Onto Saint Mary's Road is you see a window of opportunity between two cars. And the next thing you know, that window of opportunity is gone because. The, the second driver is closing in on the first and you, you're not able to turn. We've also seen, since we've lived here, at least three rollover accidents in the S curve. One was a semi truck, another was a B M W. And then there was a, most recently, it's a different type of truck. I'm not sure if I'm capturing all of the accidents, but those are three that come to mind. There are several limited sightlines. If you're coming from Lafayette, traveling, wanting to make a left-hand turn onto Bolinger, there is. Not a lot of room. To pass, for instance, on the right-hand side, drivers will come up from behind at a very quick clip if they don't. See you, if they're not directly behind you. So there's that issue, there's sun when you're trying to come out of Bolinger Canyon, when the sun is setting, it's very blinding, it's difficult to see cars. That would be taken care of with the roundabout. At Reem Boulevard, trying to turn on the Saint Mary's Road, there are visibility issues, and so someone trying to turn left has to inch forward. And then that makes the person trying to turn right inch forward, and it becomes kind of this game of creep. Which makes it increasingly difficult to turn yet again. Traveling from Maraga towards Lafayette, about to pass Reem Boulevard, I have been met on with a head-on car. Someone who was passing over the double yellow line. Because they couldn't wait for the person who was stopped to let a pedestrian go, crossing over onto the trail. So I just, there's a lot of unsafe drivers, there's. The, I disagree with Carl, his comments about the Lafayette Roundabout. I grew up here, I feel like the roundabout in Lafayette has made a lot of improvements. I know that at certain times of day, at Reem Boulevard, it can take a long time, for instance, at three o'clock. I have actually timed myself when school is in, letting out. And on multiple occasions, I've had to wait over two minutes. Encroaching up to three minutes to get through the line to be able to make a left or a right-hand turn. So, you know, it's more than just a three-second stop. So I think.
Danielle, you're, you're out of time, do you mind wrapping up?
I'm sorry, no, I guess that's it, I just think, I thank you, I would like to say just that if. Rather, when the Bolinger development happens, that, you know, these will be, continue to be two spots of interest to the town. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming tonight, all right, next is Anne Walgenbach. Hello again, Anne, you're on mute.
I'm mute, yes, sorry.
There you go.
There, okay, um, I just want to echo, those are, I've run into all of exact same situations on. Saint Mary's and Bolinger and. Reem, those are all completely accurate. I think Lafayette Roundabout is actually very functional, I haven't, I run into a lot more problems. Trying to come out of Bolinger and to kind of trying to turn off a ream than having issues at that Lafayette Roundabout. I also am from this area, and yeah, I think it's very functional. My suggestion would be if you don't have the safety data, I would definitely try to get, I don't, that. My biggest concern, what I really wanted to say is pedestrians trying to cross. Reem Boulevard there, so, you know, there's the creep thing going on, and then people are coming from the left and the right. It's hard to manage all these things, and there's a lot of campus students coming out of there, and my last comment is. So, when there's traffic on twenty-four, we get the, the traffic coming over Canyon and coming along Saint Mary's to get to Walnut Creek. And those cars are moving and really don't care about the community or the neighborhood, and I think it's pretty dangerous. And that's it, thank you so much, thank you for all the time you guys put into these, these are long meetings, I really appreciate your good work, thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there with us, Anne, all right, Stephen Roberts.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm very familiar with that intersection. I used to own the Perry's Ranch, which is at the end of Bolinger Canyon Road, it was two hundred and sixty-seven acres. So I traveled that intersection many times and had a few calls, so I, I know what it's like there. Also, about twenty years ago, I executed a hundred thousand yard landslide repair at Juliana Court in. Behind Sanders Ranch, it was the last two lots developed in Sanders Ranch. And they have a roundabout within Sanders Ranch, and when we had to have heavy equipment brought in to do that landslide repair. The big rigs could not get around the roundabout, actually, that roundabout isn't centered, so. They could get around it if they went around driving in the opposing lane. Going it around the wrong way, when they came in, they could get around it on the way out. So I just want to say if they do put a roundabout there, make sure that it's big enough for the biggest heavy equipment haulers, especially if you. Anticipate developing anything on Bolinger Canyon Road where they'll have to bring in, you know, major heavy equipment. Personally, I think the straightest route with, with stop signs is probably the least expensive and the best for safety.
Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate you coming, any other public comments? Okay, we have one that, because we've gotten a request to read it into the record, it's an email from Brett Myers. Would the town council please kindly and mercifully put this unaffordable and over-engineered roundabout fantasy out of its and our collective misery? On at least two prior occasions, the council has indicated this expensive, time-consuming and unrealistic exploration should be halted. Only to be convinced by staff that doing so prematurely before the E I R purportedly would result. In having to return already expended grant funding. Now the E I R is before you, let's accept the report and shut this down. If there is a legitimate need and desire among residents in the council for a different traffic configuration at the Saint Mary's, Reem, Bolinger intersections. An affordable and common sense solution should be explored. One like Lafayette's dual sign, signal project on release station near Olympic that was accomplished for under a million. Not an eight million dollar dual roundabout. The folly of roundabouts that needlessly would be in order of magnitude more expensive than other viable, realistic. And immensely more affordable solutions, along with the associated waste of time and resident tax money needs to end tonight. Okay. So that's it for public comments. Let's go to council member comments and discussion. Anybody want to start? So, volunteer ones, Teresa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to staff for all the time you've put into this project over the years. You know, I remember it coming to us. Gosh, I guess it was two thousand eighteen. And I remember sitting next to Dave Trotter, and I thought he asked such a good question, and he asked. If, if the company had ever. Had a roundabout that was on an S curve with a creek and. Uh, I can't remember what, S curve and a creek. And two roundabouts. Had, had they ever done that? And they said no. And that's always stuck in my mind, you know, with all the roundabouts that. You know, I'm fine with roundabouts, I think they're great, but I think that there's. A place for them and a not place for them, but one thing that I see that I haven't, and nobody has tried. And that is the three stop signs. To me, if, you know, if you haven't tried that, then why would you spend the seven thousand, seven million dollars? So, you know, I don't know that that's exactly what you're asking from me tonight, but. I, I would propose that we try stop signs first, and if there's a problem with that. Then, then we go on and look at the next solution, but, so that's kind of where I'm at, I think we. And don't, you know, if we, if we have to put it to rest instead of moving on, then I suggest we put it to rest and try some stop signs. For what it's worth.
Hey, and Teresa, what about allocating some funding for Phase Two?
No.
Okay, thank you, that, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, and I should say also, thank you to Mary and Claire Hotten. I appreciated all the emails, we read everybody's emails. You know, so I want everybody to know that. And, you know, we agree with some and we don't agree with others, and we agree with some parts of some and not all of others. But I feel like they hit the nail on the head.
All right, thank you. Other council members. Mike.
Thank you, I, first, I'd like to agree with just about everything that Teresa said there. You know, I, first of all, in terms of what's in front of us, yes, let's close out the contract in the space of the project. Once again, as I said, before we do anything, we have to see the case for, you know, the problem, where are the facts and data? That says there's a safety issue here. I want to see that before anything's done, and then I want a full evaluation of options, and I agree with Teresa, you know. Staff told me stop signs are twenty-two thousand. Traffic signals are four to five hundred thousand, of course, you need traffic studies in there, but, you know, a three-sided stop. Yeah, and, and, oh, but that might slow things down, well, that is the cut-through traffic area that goes through our town, and maybe if it wasn't so easy to cut through. That would be helpful, and three-sided, a three-sided stop sign also, I think, promotes safety. In an area where you can have speeding. Do you notice that when you continue down Saint Mary's into Lafayette, what do you have? Five stop signs. Not roundabouts, not traffic, stop signs. That's sort of telling at, at the end of the day, and I'm not saying that's the answer. So I'm not, I'm not willing to go forward because I don't see how we can. We don't know if roundabouts is the right answer, so why would I allocate money for potential looking for grants for roundabouts? I, I don't know, and my, my gut says no, but I'll keep an open mind, but I need to see information. And, you know, I would lean where Teresa was, hey, three stop signs sounds really good to me. So, that's, that's where I am, stop it, shelve it. Next year, I would say then let's bring it back and, and have the conversation, remember. We, C I P, we have twenty traffic and transportation safety projects, that's a lot, so usually staff is telling me we have too much. I'm trying to suggest to staff we have too much, that we have enough on a plate for the rest of the year, let's do this. And we have, you know, two important, very important or more, school safety projects. We have the Corliss and, and the M S D superintendent said, oh, and don't forget that dangerous left turn, and then J M. That's really important, she said that's as important as Corliss, so please, you know, let's, let's focus on these, so. You know, now, now's not the time to, to be pursuing this. So if, if we need to bring it back and, and let's make the case for the, for the safety issues, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, first thing I want to say is, in traveling the world, I like roundabouts. They, they, I even, you know, handled, handled them in Australia and Britain where it's, it's all backwards. I, I think we're, we're suffering probably from a project that has been going on for too long, unfortunately. In a, in a preliminary stage standpoint, and we're probably not seeing the whole story. But having said that, I, I, I really would like to see that, that whole story, and when I say that, I mean. How did you, how did we really narrow down to a roundabout here as opposed to. You know, a three-way stop sign or, you know, other things, and. What has to drive is, well, are we driving, are we, are we. Objective of this project really safety-related, and what's the basis for that? Or is it, you know, something to do with convenience? Or anticipating putting a thousand houses out in Bolinger Canyon, I really didn't say that, but, but, you know, some, some increased. Traffic flow. You really need to, to get down to those basics, and unfortunately, maybe that's already been done, but, but we're being asked to, to. To, to support accepting and accepting this, and I do support, you know, accepting it just to bring it to that milestone. But I'm also thinking, well, how, where do we move forward? And I, and I'm not sure I've yet heard anyone say that we have enough information. To really embrace moving forward. And, and I am concerned, when I look at the budget. It says for previous years on this project, we spent over half a million dollars. And, and I'm, I'm concerned that it's going to become a sink. And, and just continue on, and, and I, and I, I want. The staff to be working on viable. Worthwhile career-enhancing projects, not just doing studies, and if, if, if there's a compelling reason to. To, you know, really push this towards a roundabout, which I'd be happy with if it were about. which I'd be happy with if it were about wanting the cost, I, then, then I would certainly support that. And I, and I think it would be, uh, worthwhile. And, and that's the other piece to this for me is that it's, it's hard for me to imagine that reconfiguring some roads and putting in a couple of roundabouts is so expensive, accepting where it is and the challenges it has. You know, the vertical changes in elevation and the fact it's constrained by both a stream and, uh, you know, s- steep slopes. I'm presuming that's really what's driving a lot of this cost. And, and therefore, you know, I'm more used to, you know, roundabout flat land. You, you know, it's, it's, yes, it's more expensive than, than just straight road, but, you know, the cost is pretty comparable. And that gives me pause. Boy, I, I, I'd like to see that compelling, you know, story. And if it's safety, I'm all, you know, I gotta buy into that. And, and hearing that there are three rollovers. Well, that, that's, that's important information. But then it also asks the question, well, can, what can you do to, are there alternatives to stopping those rollovers? More, uh, uh, you know, less radical that requires force fitting roundabouts into a, a tight space. Um, and, you know, the, you, you know, how do you change behaviors of drivers? Um, that's sort of, you know, some of those questions that you asked. Have I answered the question?
Thank you.
Well, I, I, you know, uh, funding it, again, I'm concerned, uh, you know, additional look, looks at this. I'm concerned that, uh, again, that we're going to just string it along. And we don't have an, have a really compelling reason for doing so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You know, it's besides that, guys, it's a, it's a, it's a neat thing. I, I wish we could, I wish it were a million dollars.
Especially if you do it backwards like in, in England, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, exactly. Um, okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Sona.
Thank you. Um, yeah, in, in the discussion, you know, I just wanted to clarify something that, you know, in our discussion, I, we didn't, I didn't hear from staff that the school safety projects would be deprioritized or secondary in any way. So I don't want that to be like a takeaway. My understanding is that we're looking at whether this roundabout, you know, should be on the list of continued priorities. And, um, that's where I sort of scratched my head a little bit as well, because if we drop it, uh, and then, you know, we stop looking for sources of grant funding, then we lose out on opportunities to explore if this is a viable path. But I think it's that last piece of like, is it a viable path? That I don't think we're coalescing around an agreement on that is, is it the viable paths that we have consensus on, that we have information on? So, um, I, I, I tend to agree with comments that have already been made that, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not certain that this solution has been presented yet with that, th- this is the way to go. Um, I guess my question is like, so do we completely lose out on like, stop looking for potential opportunities to, you know, um, keep exploring it in addition to others? That, what I'm hearing is probably we do and, um, I guess I'm okay with that then.
Okay, thank you, Sona. Um,
Ma- Madam Mayor, if I could respond to a couple of those comments of the councilman.
Uh, can I, can I talk first?
Sure.
Because I think I'm, I'm going to respond, uh, in part, um, but then, then you're welcome to, um, Sean. Um, so I, you know, I, I, I think I'm, I'm in with all of my council members. I mean, to the folks who came and commented tonight and commented about the, the, you know, the situation on Bollinger, I, you know, I feel your pain. I go through those intersections multiple times a day. So, so I hear you. Um, and I want to thank, uh, staff for all the work that you've done up till this point, um, to, to get us to, to thirty-five percent and, and to a place where we can close, uh, the first chapter. Um, I, I, I am, I, I too do not believe that when we look at all of our, um, safety, uh, projects and traffic safety project and pedestrian safety projects and crosswalk safety projects, that, um, I don't see this as being at the top of the pile. Um, and given what we have already, uh, a very full public works and engineering dance card. Um, I do not at this point, um, feel like this is a must-have that should take up more staff time and should take up more funding. Um, I think, to me, what's clear is that that doesn't mean this intersection just disappears from our radar screen. I mean, we are constantly looking at a holistic level at where we should be investing in safety. And I imagine and assume that this intersection, these intersections are on the radar screen, will stay on the radar screen. And that, um, if there are funding opportunities for other answers to the situation there, that those can be pursued. So, yes, we would lose out on this, you know, on the roundabout funding, but I, I don't imagine that that means we can't get funding for other, um, safety and, and mitigation me- measures. So I, I too am of view that we do not proceed to phase two, that we, um, that we, we put this on the shelf and that we continue to look in this intersection in the context, these intersections in the context of the larger context of our ongoing C I P projects and traffic safety measures. Um, so Sean, did you want to address Sona's comment?
If I could briefly, um, you know, staff is here to serve the council. We take direction from the council. Uh, there's been three studies, very intensive studies, which have all the details. This particular project had three public meetings going over uh, data of all types of analysis for different options and refining that. So the information's there. Today, we weren't coming to you to, to go over that again. We were asking if we could close out this phase of the project and we appreciate your support in that. And we completed what we promised to complete with C C T A. Um, the, the question about a three-way stop, uh, there is many site distance and constraint issues that putting a three-way stop without addressing those, which are, as everyone knows, require a significant, uh, movement of land grading, uh, cut back of areas to put stop signs to, to put them in, in a safe manner. It is a solution, but there, it's not a sign cost. I, we can all go down to Home Depot and pick up some signs and plop them down, but the liability to do that to the town, and I have to, have to point that out to the, to the, um, the council members is we become liable for every accident that occurs out there. And stop signs increase accidents. They are the number one cause of accidents at intersections um, because of the, uh, the nature that they are. Um, so there's more to it. There'd be a lot more cost to putting stop signs if done properly to protect the town's interest. So, um, we will continue to look at every option that that's available and provide that back to the council. We're here to take your direction in, in prioritized projects as it is. But I, I just need to make sure that we, we're not promoting something that would become a liability to the, the town itself. Um, unless we do it properly and we can provide the information, how to do that. And we can provide any information about all the studies that were done previously in another presentation. But we weren't really coming to you today. We, it is the budgeting season and we needed to know that one question. Do you want us to budget it in this currency I P coming up? So we can bring that information to you as the season goes along. And of course, you can consider it in further years as you desire. So with that, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, so on that question, I, I think the answer is no. Is that right? Uh, we do not want to carry over any money into the budget for further work on this. Is, am I, do I have that right? Okay, seeing no objection. Could I have a motion on the, uh, the, uh, initial study in the mitigated negative deck? And the, what, what's in the, can I have a motion on the resolution, please?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, before the motion is made, so it would be a motion to adopt, uh, the resolution in the package, which, uh, uh, adopts the initial study and mitigate neg deck for the St. Mary's Road Roundabout Project. There is, there are provisions in the draft resolution for the appropriation of thirty-seven thousand. So we would just, we would redact that.
You want that redacted?
No, 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 we're not. That is to finish this project. The question about the fifty is for additional.
Different question. Yeah. So I, I think I would welcome a motion that reads the title of Attachment A.
Right.
You, you, you have that, Vice Mayor?
I do.
Okay, do you, would you be kind enough to make a motion?
Sure. I'm sure that I, I will be corrected. But anyway, um, I, I move for approval. Adopting an initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the St. Mary's round, roundabouts at Reeball Boulevard and Bollinger Canyon Road Project, C I P number fourteen dash six oh four. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, appropriating thirty-seven thousand dollars from Fund Seven Ninety-nine La Merinda Fee and Finance Authority and closing out of the preliminary engineering and environmental analysis phase of the project. Full stop.
We have a motion to the second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, motion Vice Mayor, Councilmember McClure, second. Um, roll call vote, Councilmember Macor?
Yes.
Councilmember Anoda?
Yes.
And Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walke?
Yes.
Mayor Sauce, yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sean and team. Appreciate it. Um, okay, next item, agenda item. Ten C Agreement with the Contra Costa County Animal Services for Animal Control Services in Maraga. Um, this is an action item. We're being asked to authorize the town manager to execute the agreement. So we'll do staff report, council member questions, public comment, council discussion and action. Who's up?
That would be me.
Ah, hi, Chief.
Good morning or evening.
Good morning.
Morning, yeah. Yeah, we're getting close though.
Yeah.
Uh, this is, as you know, since, uh, the inception of the town, uh, Contra Costa County Services has provided animal control services to the town. By law, the town is required to provide certain animal control services to residents and uh, others within our border or within our, our jurisdiction. Uh, realistically, right now in Contra Costa County, there are two agencies that provide the service. Uh, first is obviously the county and the second is the city of Antioch. Um, uh, what you're being asked to, uh, take a look at tonight is, uh, basically renewal of our agreement with the county uh, for a two-year term, and it also provides for successive three-year terms. Um, in, in preparation, uh, with this contract, and this is a similar contract that, actually, it's this a contract that they are, uh, presenting to all of the in, uh, Contra Costa County with the exception of Antioch, uh, for approval. Um, one of the cons- a couple of concerns that the town manager and I've had is that we have seen some reduction in services over the past few years. Uh, and that I think is in large part due to, uh, their reduction in revenue. Uh, through an agreement with the Public Managers Association last year, uh, each of the jurisdictions increased the amount of money, uh, that, that we paid last year to increase some of those services. Uh, the town share was about two thousand dollars. Uh, what, uh, so backing up a bit, some of the services that animal ser- that animal services does provide are obviously field services where we see the animal control officers in town. They patrol, they retrieve strays. Uh, they also respond to animal bite investigations and animal cruelty investigations. Uh, I've actually, uh, personally accompanied, uh, uh, the animal control officers, uh, on some of those investigations. Found them to be very professional, very knowledgeable. I was impressed. Uh, you saw the, uh, incident brief, uh, about our incident yesterday. Uh, one of their officers responded out to the scene, took custody of the, of the dog that was left behind in the car. Uh, they also, uh, uh, they have become a, uh, for the most part, what is known as a no-kill shelter. So which means that any of the strays that, that come into the shelter, uh, they're not euthanized. They're actually, uh, uh, they work with, uh, volunteer groups and arrange for adoptions for the animals whenever possible. Obviously, if it's a vicious animal or something like that, an adoption's not possible. They also do vaccination clinics at low cost and also low-cost spay and neuter clinics, uh, in, in, in an attempt to, um, uh, ensure that rabies is not prevalent in our county and also to reduce the, the amount of stray animals. Uh, a concern that we have had is their costs have been increasing fairly exponentially in the la- over the last few years. In fact, this reflects an increase of about sixteen percent this year over what we paid in the, in the last fiscal year. Um, one of the, uh, concern that we have, as you see in the staff report, is how they calculate their costs. Uh, and the town manager and I have, we, 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 we had the same meeting with the animal control staff that every other city uh, did. And the comments that were made to us was, you, you're bringing up things that nobody else is. I, and I, I basically, I looked at them. I said, why actually read the contract? That's why. But one of the things that we did, uh, get them to agree to is a reconciliation of, uh, uh, costs at the end of the year, because one of our fears has been is that the town is paying more money each year than, uh, than it receives in services. So what we have gotten them to agree to is not only to study the costs and reconcile the costs, but also a, a mechanism for them to refund any surplus back to the town, uh, which would be credited towards the, the contract next year. Um, at that point, one of the things that is interesting, I do outline the cost per capita, and they use a per capita basis in calculating their costs, which is different than our contract with the Sheriff's Office for Dispatch Services. That contract is based solely on use. Uh, you know, obviously, uh, we have seen increases in that contract also, but that is frankly reflective of the amount of use that we have and, and also some increases in the, in the cost to provide the service. Uh, our costs are the county, the Contra Costa County's costs are substantially lower than other counties. You got to give them a little bit of credit here. Uh, in some of the, I believe it Sacramento County is up over twelve dollars per capita and Solano County is far behind. So, uh, almost, uh, uh, we're probably at about two-thirds then of, of what they're, uh, of what these other counties are paying. So they are doing their best to, to keep costs down. Uh, our commitment is to stay on them, uh, about it. And, uh, we do have a very good mechanism set in place for meeting with the animal services staff. Uh, the, the operation side of the house has been extremely responsive, worked really well with us and, and we're pleased with that. With, I think I would, uh, take any questions that, that you might have.
Thank you, John. Um, any questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just one question, John, uh, and, and great report and, um, critical service. The question is, do we have an alternative practice from a practical standpoint?
Not really. We, uh, the, the, um, town manager and I did some exploration. We did have talks with out-of-county agencies that provide animal control services. And while we got close with one agency, it, it, it didn't, didn't really work out. It's a, it's a rather, I don't know what, if I want to say a, a big deal coming across the county line and, and, and doing that. Now, credit, animal services is open to a lot of different alternatives to us, but at this point in time, we don't have the staff to do it. And we certainly do not want to get into the animal shelter business.
Yeah, and I just want to add that Chief spent quite a bit of time exploring alternatives and got pretty far before he, you know, really decided there, there aren't a lot of alternatives. Um, and I think he did do a great job in looking at our contract and negotiating some of the finer points. The real question is, and, and, uh, the chief and I have both tried to send this message very strongly, um, to Candace Anderson's office, which is, we believe that the cost should be allocated based on use and dispatch, not based on We believe that the cost should be allocated based on use and work to dispatch, not based on per capita because we're paying more. Um, for the service that we're receiving than other cities. Now, because the county contributes such a large share, um, they contribute about thirty percent. We're currently not paying. More than the um. Than the services that we're providing, but should the county share go down, that would change. But even so. Um. A different methodology would be more equitable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? All right, seeing none, um, I'll open it for public comment. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing no hands, I will close public comment. Uh, okay, bring it back to the council. Mike.
Yeah, thank you. Um, well, this this story goes back to remember my first year. So the last three years. You'd be sitting with John and Cynthia and talking about budgets and. And John would tell me, animal animal services, they they overcharge. And what are you talking about? Well, they charge you some per capita, not what we use. Oh, really? Oh, John, you have to do something. Hey, John, a La Merinda. Hey, how about a La Merinda? Chinese, you know, so for three years and John says, I keep trying. I can't really. Come up with anything that makes sense and Cynthia too, of course. And then I'm reading this report and said, oh, I wish I could buy stock and this is going up so high. And I finally get to the point thirteen D that says they're gonna true it up to our actual costs. Hallelujah. So this is just for John and Cynthia. I just, I'm, this is really important. We're we're too small of a town to just. Oh, we're gonna allocate it more than what you really use, uh, just go away. We can't do that. So I really appreciate this. This shows how we manage our money. And manage our nickels and and I credit the county for doing some benchmarking to say, well, look at our costs and now compare them to other counties. We do pretty good. So as long as we get our fair share and as they've told me, uh, you really don't want to run anything like this yourself. So. We'll keep John focused on safety and Cynthia focused on running our town. So just a big thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Um, I I just want to thank you, uh, Cynthia and John for for getting this true up and um. You know, I I and I think continued advocacy for them just changing the formula to uh usage just across the board. If they're doing it for dispatch. They have ways of tracking it for this. And that would make sense. Let us know if there's anything we can do to help. Uh, in the advocacy, but um, I think. You know, given that comparison to comparables and given that we are getting a true up, I mean, I think this is. Pretty much as as good as it gets for a service that we have to provide. We really don't have a choice here. So. Um, uh, would anyone like to make a motion? Teresa.
Okay, so. I move that we approve the interagency agreement with the Contra Costa. County Animal Service Department for Animal Control Services pursuant to the Town of Maraga purchasing policy. And authorizing the town manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, Councilmember Macker.
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda.
Yes.
Councilmember McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walke.
Yes.
Mayor Sauce, yes, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, next agenda item. Reorganization of the town council mayor and vice mayor. So as you recall, at our January fifth special meeting. The council passed a resolution that uh confirmed me as mayor and Steve as Vice Mayor. Um, until such time as we agreed to swap seats or today, whichever. Uh, came first. And so today is the day. Uh, it's time to. Uh, pass the gavel to to Steve. I wanna uh, as I do that, I want to thank Steve. For his partnership and collaboration during these last few months and I want you to know, Steve, that I stand ready to support you. In your new role, just as you have supported me. So with uh, no further delay. And let me introduce Mayor Walke.
Thank you so much, uh, Renata. And and I want to echo that uh. These last five months have actually been a great pleasure for me because um. Renata really has gone out of her way to include me in decisions. And uh, I've, uh, it's it's really worked out, I think, very, very well. I I want you all to know that I have no intention of. Reshuffling assignments or anything of that nature. Uh, let's just uh continue to move forward. And and I, to to great extent, I really view this evening as just a a minor switch. Um, and I, so I haven't provided or prepared any any honorium for uh Renata. And I hope she forgives me for that, but uh, uh, I I think that uh. Let's let's uh, let's continue the good work for the rest of the year. I look forward to working with everybody. I am always very, very interested in. Feedback, uh, both public and private. So um. I I uh really do buy into that that concept. If uh we wish to continue at this point. We now move on to discussion items. Are there any discussion items? I see none on the agenda. Yes, ma'am.
Before you proceed, there may be some members of the public who want to speak on.
Excuse me.
Reorg.
Thank you. Are there any public comments associated with this change? Carl Davis, if you would let Carl in, please. Marty. Carl, you're, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Walke. And thank you, Mayor Sauce. I really appreciate. The agreement that you two made and I really appreciate this smooth transition. And I really appreciate hearing that things will remain stable and predictable and polite. You guys have done wonderfully. Thank you.
Carl, thank you very much. Any other public comments? Any comments from the town council? Mike?
I think we have to get some thank yous in here. So first of all, Renata, thank you so much, Mayor Renata. Thank you and now Vice Mayor Renata. So thank you very much um in leading us. Through this first half of the year and getting us to a very good spot. And Mayor Steve Walke. Let's say it again, Mayor Steve Walke. All right. Well, good luck, sir. Uh, you've earned it and um, you know, let's continue to try to do good things and. Listen to each other and talk to each other and and have have some fun maybe along the way. Thank you.
I agree. Any other, any other comments input from council members? Sona?
Yes, thank you. I really, really appreciate the collaborative spirit, just in how you introduced this topic. Um, Renata and how you are passing along um the torch, so to speak. Um, I really. Really appreciated your your leadership and look forward to yours, Steve, and collaborating with you and like you said, just. Continue to to move forward with on our very busy, busy agendas. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. Teresa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and congratulations to you, Steve. And congratulations to you, Renata, in handling this so nicely, both of you handling this so nicely. I'm excited to see what the next couple of months are going to bring and I am sure it'll be smooth sailing. And we'll all learn a lot because I always learn a lot at these meetings. You guys are, this is a fabulous team. And it's gonna be fun to to watch you, Steve, and I know you're gonna do fabulous. Congratulations again.
Thank you. With that. Uh, shall we move on to discussion items? Item number eleven? Or I see no additional uh. Public comments. We've already gone through that. Discussion items, I seen none. Council requests for future agenda items. Are there any? Mike?
Yes, um, I will hold the future agenda item regarding a policy on emails. In talking to the town clerk, I believe it's a good idea, but Renata, I'll take your advice, get some more information before I bring it. Is it really necessary? Got it. Thank you for that. Now, the one I did want to bring on small business, so future gen item. I move the town council will discuss and clarify whether the small business grant program. Should or should not include nonprofits at the next meeting on June eighth.
Is there a second? I will second that. Just to resolve any confusion on this issue. Right. Discussion?
And I, just to reiterate, not to get into merits, but to reiterate, this is not voting on whether. You think it should or shouldn't be. We're voting on, we should have a discussion to clarify our direction. That's what we're voting on.
Call the question? Roll call vote? Sona?
Uh, no, I don't think a discussion is required. We could post something on the website or something to clarify. Thank you.
Teresa?
No.
Renata?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you very much. Any other uh? Request for future agenda items? Denise, you're visible. There must be a reason.
I just wanted to to just clarify that that the vote count. Um, so.
Thank you very much. The motion failed by a vote of three to two. Three noes being uh council members, uh, Anoda and Mocker and Vice Mayor. Uh, Renata Sauce and the vote, the positives being uh Mayor Walke and Mayor and and Councilmember McClure.
Thank you.
Thank you. So a motion for adjournment?
I moved.
Oh.
Point of order. I I would like to make a specific motion for adjournment. I have some words.
If that.
I I cede the floor to Mike.
Thank you. Be quick. Uh, I move that we adjourn the meeting in honor of the new mayor, Steve Walke, and honor outgoing mayor, Renata Sauce.
Second that.
Second. Everyone's seconds.
Everyone.
Roll call. Roll call vote. It was um made by uh Mayor McClure, second by.
Council member.
How good. Council member McClure, second by council member Mocker. Will call vote. Councilmember Mocker.
Yes.
Teresa, I'm gonna get this. I'm gonna become consistent. It will happen. Mike?
Yes.
Renata?
Yeah.
Are you ready to take over again? Yes. Motion passes, meetings adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Guys, finally. See you next Wednesday.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.